And if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the second agenda item under the board workshop is a roundtable discussion among board members, staff, and principals addressing the following topics. Progress update of school performance plans related to the Nevada School Performance Framework for Carson High School. And with that, Sue, do you have any introduction or we're gonna go right to Tasha?
I would want to give Mrs. Fuson the entire time.
Oh, Tasha, have a good time.
Thank you. Actually, for the sake of time, because we do have quite a bit of information we want to share with you.
Excuse me. Let me make this announcement. As you speak, please state your name for the record. Renee, you know, would know most of you, but however, it's a little hard with a lot of you here tonight. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder, President Sorek. So, Tasha Fuson, Principal, Carson High School. Again, just for the sake of time, we're gonna, each group here in front of you is gonna have some time to talk to you about their individual or their respective areas, and they'll introduce themselves at that time. So if you don't mind, I will just kind of jump in with an overview or an opening conversation about how we plan on going through the activities for our hour with you. In front of you, or I believe in your board packet, you have a copy of our strategic map and our improvement plan and executive summary. This packet, my team, you guys don't have that. This packet was from our accreditation from last year, so we had a visitation in May of last year. I did do a board presentation to all of you in, earlier on that. So this is just kind of a synopsis of that overarching plan. I wanted to just make sure that you had a copy of that so that you know that we did do a needs summary, or we did do, look at the needs that we have at the school as it relates to the data, and come up with three actual goals that we are working around. ACT specifically, which is what we're gonna talk about tonight as it relates to the Nevada School Performance Plan, is embedded in Goal One within our plan, which is closing achievement gaps for our students and our individual sub-populations. So just know that that's where it kind of relates to our school performance plan. Our accreditation plan is a five-year plan. So the way that system works for accreditation purposes is in two and a half years, we will be required to do a progress report to Advanced Ed on how we're progressing towards many of the goals that we set forth in that plan. Within the state, we are required to do an annual school performance plan, but we did have approval statewide this year for high schools and any schools going through accreditation to utilize their accreditation plan, so we weren't writing two separate plans. So that's why you have a copy of that. Then the other thing you have in front of you is, of course, a copy of our NSPF for the Nevada School Performance Framework for Carson High School. We are very pleased to state that we are a four-star school. We did score 79 points. What you're gonna hear a lot about tonight is the fact that that's good and we're happy with that, but it's not good enough. So we're gonna talk to you about our plan to get to a five-star school by the end of this year. And that's kind of how we pieced out what our goals are and what we are strategically focusing on to get across that five-star rating for you and for our students. What I also put in your, on your tables in front of you is a copy of the high school point attribution tables. The reason why this is important is it actually shows you why we scored or where we scored and how many points in each of these categories. So if you will just humor me, we'll go through this very quickly, but it will, it will point out why we picked the goals for each department that we picked. So under the academic achievement category, the very, the very first indicator, we receive points, or all high schools receive points for CCR math, which is the ACT math, CCR ELA, which is ACT ELA, which is a combination of reading, writing, and English. And then the Nevada High School Science, so that's the end of course in biology. So that is not ACT science. And the way you figure out how many points are for each area is utilizing these attribution tables. So I have actually highlighted for you on your copies, you can see Carson High School, we had 28% of our students that scored proficient in math and the ACT. I'm not sure how much of a background or how much you all know in terms of, for our state, that proficient rate is slightly lower than what ACT itself considers college-ready. So this is utilizing the state's indicators, not ACT's indicators. So it's, it can be confusing for people when they look at, for instance, the ACT profile that is, that is available on, on the web, and why those scores or those percentages would be different than what's on our Nevada School Performance Framework. But that's why, because Nevada has a different cut score. So in particular on this, you can see we had 28% proficient. Where I've highlighted, it shows you that we earned only 4.5 points out of 10. So we know that that is a big area of need for us. We didn't receive even half the points there. So we're gonna talk about how we're gonna get there today. For CCR ELA, which is your next page, we scored 46.3. That gave us 5 out of 10 points. Again, another area of need. For the Nevada High School Science, we had 42.1% proficient. So this is on page 52 of the attribution tables at the bottom. That gave us 3.5 out of 5 points. That particular subcategory is only 5. So we did a little bit better in science in terms of earning the points than we did in ELA and mathematics, but we are still working on improving that area. So I have my science team here tonight. Our next category is graduation. This is a definite celebration for Carson High School. And this, this, of course, was the graduating class of 2017. Sneak peek, I do believe our graduation rate, although it's not published, I think it's gonna go up if my math is correct for, for last year, but we'll have to see that when the final numbers come out. But this was for 2017, so 93.2, and we received full 25 points on that. So if you look at the attribution table on page 53, you can see anything above an 89.4 is full points on that. Then on the next part, five-year graduation, that's at the bottom of page 53. In this particular part, this is always a question of many people about how you can have a lower five, fifth-year graduation rate than you have a fourth-year graduation rate. We talked about this briefly at the last meeting, but basically what happens is, for instance, at Carson High School, we have three CLS classes. And so these are students who, under the existing policy for graduation that, that is rated on this NSPF, our students who are in our CLS programs earning an adjusted diploma count as non-graduates. So they count as a non-grad for their fourth year, their fifth year, their sixth year, their seventh year. Some of them come back in eighth year, depending on their birthday, and it stacks. So you'll have students in there that, that count against us multiple times. Again, we're very excited because I know part of your agenda items today is to have the second reading of the new graduation policy, but that piece should start to improve drastically as well in that our students will now be able to earn an adjusted diploma. Or, yeah, an adjusted, alternate, thank you, Sue, an alternate diploma, not adjusted. So, but we did receive four out of five points there. And then on the next indicator is English language proficiency. So that is ALPA, 29.5% of our students met the AGP. And again, you can see at the top of page 54, anything above 20% is full credit. So we feel that's an area of strength for us. College and career readiness has three different subparts. Post-secondary preparation participation, so that is a, that is students that are taking AP classes, dual-credit classes, or third-year completer courses, or even second-year completer courses. So within a CTE strand, anything that's considered the completer courses. So that's participation. And we had 70.8% of the students that scored in there, and that gave us 8.5 out of 10 points. So that is another area that we continue to improve on every year with increasing our AP enrollment and increasing enrollment in Jump Start, increasing enrollment in our CTE program. So that one is going up, and I foresee that that should go up another half a point. Then we have post-secondary preparation completion. What makes that different from the participation is, in order for students to, to count in that area, they have to get a three or higher on their AP assessment. They have to complete that CTE course sequence with a B average and pass those end-of-program assessments that are attached to their courses and/or pass their, their Jump Start classes. So we had 46.2% of students who, who met that indicator, and that earned us eight out of 10 points for that indicator. And then advanced diplomas, we had 41.6% of our students, which gave us four out of five points. Another area that we continue to increase on or improve on as students are taking more honors and AP-level courses. And then that last area is engagement that has three separate areas. This is on page 56 of your attribution tables. Ninth-grade credit sufficiency, that is students in ninth grade earning five or more credits at the end of their ninth-grade year. We had 90.9%. This is an area that, actually, it's the second one down, that we, we earned three out of five points. So again, something that we continue to strive to improve upon. One of our biggest areas of concern was, however, chronic absenteeism. So 18.3% of our students are listed as chronically absent. That means that they, they were not in attendance at school 90% of the school year. That includes medical absences. So any student who, who is not at school for any reason, whether it be a truancy or whether it be medically excused, it becomes a chronically absent student if they miss more than 10 days within the school year, five block classes within a semester. So that's, so that's an area that we actually only received 1.5 out of five points. And then that last part is the climate survey. So that was a bonus point. You got two bonus points if you had more than 75% of your students take the SEL survey. And of course, we met that indicator and got those bonus two points. Overall, it brings us to a 79. But like I said, we needed an 82 to be a five-star. So that's always our goal, is we wanna, we wanna be able to highlight the achievements of our students at Carson High School. And so we have come up with a strategic plan for addressing that specifically tonight. What we're gonna talk about is the academic achievement area. So ACT scores in math and ELA, and the end of course for biology and science. So that is why I've brought my team and the folks that you see around me, because they are gonna talk to you specifically about what's going on in their respective departments. So before I allow them to go, do you have any quick questions for me on what this is or how to read this, or why we've tackled, or why we're tackling academic achievement as our number-one goal?
Any questions from the board? Comments? We will have, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. So we are actually gonna start with math. So I would like to introduce Sue Drawstoff. We're starting with Sarah. Oh, Sarah's gonna have to use that. So Sue Drawstoff is my department chair for the mathematics department, and Sarah Lobssinger, of course, is our implementation specialist for mathematics.
Hello, Sarah Lobssinger for the record. So you're gonna pull out this blue sheet, and if, we're gonna start kind of looking at the, the first view with the four quadrants. If you look at the top, we decided this year as a, as a math team to earn another point for our NSPF, to, to earn the 5.5 out of 10. And in order to do that, we need at least 30.3% of our students to score a 20 or higher on the ACT. So that is our goal as a math department. We've laid out some strategies that, that we've been tackling this year, and I'll let Ms. Drawstoff talk about that. And, but we'd like to, to do a little activity with you first, if, if you will. So if you flip it over to the front, our students will take the ACT in March, and they are required to take a 60-item test in 60 minutes. So after Mr. Cassioppo and, and I and Jenny Chandler and Ms. Macy met with the EDU students a couple months ago, something we asked them was, you know, tell us about the ACT. And something that kind of came up was, we wanna know more, and we are, you know, really nervous about the timing, you know, and, and the stress of it. So I don't know if Mr. Cassioppo realizes this, but I took this back to Sue Drawstoff and, and Ms. Fuson, and we kind of took that feedback and thought, we need to start acting on this immediately. So we created a five-and-five strategy where the students will take five items in five minutes. So I'd like you to kind of practice this. But to make it a little easier on you, you get to choose at least one problem to get correct in one minute. Okay? And everyone's welcome to join in. So take something to write with, and you've got your five items. I'm gonna set the timer. And you may begin. You have 15 more seconds. Okay, time's up. I did walk around because I wanted you to feel that pressure of someone walking around the room, like our students will feel. And there is an answer key coming around, so you can kind of see how you did.
Me too.
So I'm gonna pass this on to Ms. Drawstoff. She's gonna give you kind of the lowdown on, on what we've been working on in the classroom while you check your work.
Sarah, before you, you know, pass this on, you're the implementation specialist. Would you say that our math teachers are teaching to the Nevada performance standards?
I do. So this last year, we went through textbook adoption, so the teachers now have all of the materials that they need. They also are highly qualified, and I have, you know, a lot of faith in their ability to teach the content. And then we're also, like what Ms. Drawstoff's about to talk about, is their instructional strategies. So I do believe they are teaching to the standards.
Do, do you, as the implementation specialist, check and verify that the learning guides are tied to the standards, like we have targeted goals, essential questions, and a basis for students to assess themselves? Is that all tied in and connected to the standards?
It's all connected. So the teachers were well aware of our goal to even do well on the ACT. So not only are the learning guides being used in the classrooms, all of the targets and objectives are all tied to the standards. They also took it upon themselves over the summer to add examples for every objective and target on the learning guide. So now when the students looking at the learning guide, they're not just seeing a bunch of words, but they actually see the problems that are tied to ACT, tied to the standards, and they can actually self-assess, knowing what the words actually mean.
Okay, and using that, you know, as a basis, then the learning guides and the whole learner center model is, is geared toward early intervention for the students, so for a three-week period for math. Is early intervention given, so we actually have an ongoing learning process under the learner center model? Does that happen, and do we have a support team?
We do. Well, the PLCs are in place, and we have, we meet regularly as a PLC. I do think early intervention is happening. In fact, the materials that are, you know, that we recently adopted, that the teachers are using, all have that embedded. So not only are teachers really able to differentiate, but they have the materials to help them spiral. So the students are actually seeing more of that material spiral throughout instead of kind of, you know, per unit. So I, I do believe, and I know Ms. Fuson has done several observations and can attest to that.
Okay, we'll be coming back, but go ahead.
Um, Tasha Fuson, Principal, Carson High School, for the record. I would also like to add some background information for all of you, that we, we started with a workshop back in August called Begin With the End In Mind. We had folks from ACT, or a presenter from ACT, come out and actually work with us, each of, almost everybody in this room, I think, everybody from our, our team here was at that seminar. But we, we took a look at our existing Nevada academic content standards and looked at how students were being assessed on the ACT. The number-one underlying theme that we saw is, yes, we were teaching to the standards, but we do have a concern with, are we teaching to the level of rigor or the depth of knowledge that students need to, to have regarding those standards in order to perform on the ACT? So some of the work that, well, the work that all of our departments have been doing in addition to what Sarah was talking about, was going through and actually matching our assessments to the level of rigor, raising the level of rigor on the assessments, to match that of what we would see or what our students would see in, on the ACT. And then having our learning guides then revised to also reflect that level of rigor, and then having our teachers be able to have that as a basis to backwards-design their lessons in the classroom. So it wasn't that we weren't teaching to the standards before. We've been teaching to the standards and those standards that are assessed in the ACT. There is an alignment there, but it was the depth of knowledge or the rigor that was the bigger concern in terms of why our students have flatlined on the ACT. So what are we doing differently now? Is that we're going in and taking a really clear look at that, that depth of knowledge, what's going on in the classroom, and making sure that our teachers have the resources and the guidance that they need to lift our students up to that.
Sue Drawstoff, Carson High School Math Department Chair, for the record. Just to give you a brief synopsis on the opposite side where Sarah started from the math test that you just took, just a quick synopsis of what we, as a math department, are doing in terms of getting us to our goal of increasing by a point to getting 5.5 out of 10 on the performance framework. We have three basic ideas or three basic areas where we are focusing. The first, as Tasha mentioned, is having the ability in, within our curriculum and assessments to mirror the content on the ACT that the students are going to be exposed to or be tested on, as well as the level of rigor. I think what we are finding with the data that we looked at, at our Begin With the End In Mind get-together, was that our students have the basic skills, but it's the application piece. So that's where we're falling a little short. That was our weakest link when we looked at our results. So we're looking at taking those basic ideas and helping the students know how to apply that in a format that they perhaps haven't seen before. So if you're teaching in the classroom and you're asking questions in a certain way, and the homework is in a certain way, and the test is in a certain way, the kids know that, and they can be successful. But when I give them the same concept, perhaps a little bit differently, can they apply the skills that they have and successfully answer the question? That's something that we're focusing on, try to, trying to get to that point. And, and that's something that's requiring them to develop critical thinking skills. The second area, major area that we're looking at, as Sarah mentioned, is the timing, having the, the mental stamina to sit through 60 questions in 60 minutes. I, you can't see it, but your face is dropped when you looked at this 60 questions in 60 minutes. And not only are the kids having to do that piece, but they're having to do English pieces and science pieces and social studies pieces, and, and it's overwhelming. It's a pretty arduous test, and it's actually sadly a little painful to watch these kids have to go through that. And so if we can help them build some confidence in the fact that, yes, I can answer 60 questions in 60 minutes, that's not something that's impossible for me to do, then I think that they're gonna be more successful. That's not the way we assess them in the classroom. That would be a ridiculous way to assess them in the classroom, but we have to prepare them to do that on the ACT. Then the last piece, which I think is an important component, is information. The kids feel like they're trying to hit the bull's eye of an invisible target. What we have to do is get the kids to understand, what are they gonna be faced with on test day? What does the test look like? What does my timing look like? But then more importantly, what does this score even mean to me? I think up until now, the students didn't necessarily have a buy-in. Some students would say, well, I'm not going to college, so I don't need to do well on this test. But the state's got policies in place now that regardless of whether they're going to college or not, their score on the ACT exam directly affects their schedule, their senior year of high school. And they need to know that sooner rather than later. So getting them that information and getting them all the tools that they need so they're not blindsided by anything, hopefully, on test day, I think is gonna help us reach our goal.
Questions? Go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna say, I agree with that. I think, you know, we're, you know, your plan is good. My general assessment of kids these days is they're just busier, say, like, than I was when I was in high school, and I was a decent student and all that. But when you talk about kids not being used to sitting down, taking a three- or four-hour exam, you know, I wasn't either, but I had time after school to take practice ACTs, or in my case, SATs, and I took a bunch of them. And I just, you know, repetition was my friend. The kids, a lot of them don't have that opportunity these days. They're just, whether it's schoolwork, whether it's extracurricular activities, whatever it is, the, the day of a, a modern-day high school student is so much busier than what it was when I was in school, that, I don't know how we do that, but they're generally on their own, not gonna have a lot of time to do that repetition and take those tests. And so somehow, creating those opportunities for these kids, in addition to what, you know, you're proposing, I don't know how we do it because there's only so much time in a day, but that's kind of, you know, if we can provide that opportunity for these kids as well, I mean, all that adds to their success on this.
That's actually part of our plan. We have, in our Algebra II curriculum, which is primarily juniors, which is our target audience for the ACT, we have set aside two weeks in February for an ACT unit to work on items that we feel students need review on before the ACT, but as well with our block schedule, it gives us an opportunity to give them full-length tests, to sit for 60 minutes and try the 60 questions in 60 minutes, and then get that repetition built in within the confines of the school day, because you're right, they, they don't have time to do it after school. I'm also looking at piloting an ACT workshop during our AB-55 period for any of our junior students who are in AP enrichment to come on over to my room, and we can work on ACT skills during the school day for them.
You know, I think that the culture we're in, there's a lot of tests, and this is what these kids are required to do. We're required to do it as educators. But I think that what you said about them actually being able to apply those skills in real-world situations, because life isn't like an ACT test. And I think at the end of the day, as a school board, you know, we focus a lot on test scores and data, but I think that we have to remember, our job is to educate children. Tests are one small part of that. It's one small tool we use to decide how effective we are and not necessarily the worth of their knowledge. And I think that we have to find a way to support them in both areas. We have to give them the skills to be successful in those tests because we want them to be able to get into colleges and universities. We want our schools to be successful for the hard work our teachers are doing. But at the same time, the most important thing is, when these kids get out of school, do they understand math? Do they have knowledge? Are they educated individuals? And so I think that, I just wanna, I wanna point that out because I think that test scores are a very small indicator of success.
I would just add that test scores, overall, I'm not talking about individuals, that overall gives an indication, are we teaching kids? overall gives an indication, are we teaching kids the expected standards that's going across this country? And Sarah, you, you presented, you know, something, you know, the time and all that and you, you talk about the time limits on students taking these exams. But keep in mind, we're not the only school district in the world doing this. There are high schools across this country with the same things, but they're preparing their students for the expectations. And just taking a test with time limits is another example of what happens in life, whether it's math or anything else. We're all put under a time constraints of time and it gives them another opportunity to, to develop skills. So, so far what you're saying, you're bringing our students up so they can meet the standards, which are ACT, our standards, and, but they're, they're doing it in a way that will benefit them after they leave school. So just continue with your presentation.
Next up.
Okay, we Rochambeau'd out in the hallway and I think Science is up next.
Sharon Hallinan, Dean of Students, Carson High School, for the record. So, good evening. The Science Department earned 3.5 out of 5 points for a student proficient level of 42.1 percent, as Mrs. Fuson alluded to in the high school point attribution table. We're trying to go to the next level. That's where our goal came from, to 43.7 percent and 49 percent with an increase of 1.6 percent. The Science Department is increasing the level of rigor by including ACT-style questions throughout the content areas. And if you look, we're, we're golden, the Science Department. And we have listed a two-pronged approach to improving our scores. We're looking at the Biology EOC, which contributes to that score. And then we're also looking at how the other science classes and teachers can support learners for career and college readiness. They need a score, a minimum score of 23 to be college and career-ready. And you'll see, and I'm not going to read all the various approaches by different content areas within the Science Department, but our teachers analyzed and looked at what skills are needed and how can they adjust common assessment questions to reflect the ACT-style questions and incorporate more critical thinking, problem-solving skills, skills reading graphs and charts. Those are the kind of skills that you see throughout the science questions on the ACT. And our handout here provides a few more details. Also in our handout is an alignment which Rod Butler is going to talk about now.
Let me do that now? All right, we're moving on. Rod Butler, for the record. One of the things our science team did, let Rod, it's going to jump in and, and hit one of your questions right here real quick, is we went through and we looked at, with the ACT, they have content area that they will have questions about, not standards that they're testing. And then you have NGSS, which is our version of the Nevada State Science Standards. There's a slight difference between them and Scott can talk about that if we need to on those, but for the most part, they align up. The NGSS and the Nevada State Standards do. There's not a direct correlation between ACT and NGSS. So what we did was I sat down with the, the science teachers and I, and I went through life science and then physical and then earth science with them. And I said, if we look at this, where best could you fit this standard in the ACT content areas? So if you're looking at, I think it's the third page in, yeah, third page in, it starts, there's a spreadsheet there, which for you guys, difficult to read, for me, impossible to read. On my spreadsheet and on my computer, it looks great.
We'll give you the benefit of that.
Yeah, I will. But basically what's happening is you have ACT and the first one is life, life science and there's categories under there, animal behaviors, one of them. Talked with the life science teachers and said, which NGSS standard does this go fit with? And so we went through life science, we went through all the NGSS standards, found the one we thought matched up the best with that. And then we went to the third column there is to the learning guides and we found which standard in the learning guides, which objective in there best matched up that we thought we were teaching that with. So while there's not a direct one, we went through all of our content areas for, basically what I covered was Biology, Chemistry, and then those courses that I thought the students would be taking, potentially taking in their junior year. That, so eliminated mainly some AP courses we didn't do that crosswalk on. From there, we are able to see where we are covering, where we might have gaps, but for the most part, you'll see if you spent time looking through this, our learning targets are there, they match up, and we can walk it straight across into where we think it ties in. And that does two things with the two-pronged look that we have to look at because with our science tests, for the academic part of it where we had the 3.5 out of 5 points, that's off the life science, that's off of basically our ninth-grade Biology students. Those are the ones getting those points. There's some 10th graders in there who didn't have it in ninth grade that are taking that, but it's that group right there. And then the second approach that we have to look at then is, you know, two years down the road when they take the ACT, so what are we doing as a group then to focus on that? So we have to focus in two different areas. We have that first year, that freshman year, and then their junior year coming back to it. And so we did that crosswalk through to do that. Some things that we are doing in there is if we turn a couple pages. This is actually a screenshot of Scott's. We have, in Mastery Connect, we have loaded, loaded in the ACT level of question, questioning level. So you'll see those numbers on there. It's in like an IOD 501. That talks about a level of questioning under, under there and Scott can talk more about those in, in a bit. That is the next level we need to move up in our, in our rigor of questioning, we believe, to take our scores to a higher level on the ACT. So we're focusing on that level of questioning to get our scores up higher there. So we now have those standards in Mastery Connect, along with we're loading in practice assessments on there. And you can see the first three columns on this page here are assessments that Scott's given his students in there that are aligning up with the ACT practice that we're doing. Along with that, the teachers have been looking at, and those are on the first two pages, they've been looking at their own curriculum and how they can adjust, either providing formative assessments throughout the class period, or how they can start tweaking and changing some of their questions within just the assessments that they're, they're giving for our benchmark assessments to also match that level of questioning style. Because one of the things that, when we first brought this up to the science teachers at a PLC, they didn't, at first, they didn't really see how we're going to help them prepare for this when you think about the ACT as being three different areas, life, physical, and earth. And if I'm teaching, let's just go with, we'll go with Mr. Manukian's forensics class, that doesn't fit in any, any of those three. But when they started looking at, well, they might not, they don't necessarily need to know everything in those content areas as long as they understand how to process getting through the questions like you had, just didn't just a brief moment ago. And going through there, understanding how to read the questions, and in the science part of it, it's about a lot of being able to look at the data, doing a quick data analysis, understanding the charts and tables in there, and then taking that and being able to answer questions about it. And so they're looking at how to incorporate that more often in the, in their assessments and throughout their classrooms.
The questions, Rod, before we go on to the next? Don't go away.
Did you want?
Scott Vickery, Carson High School Science. As Ms. Hallinan, Mr. Butler stated, we're trying to improve the, our star rating basically by two-pronged approach. One is by impacting the EOC scores and two is by impacting the ACT scores. Even though there are separate targets, the, the skills that are associated with both those targets are basically the same. They're evaluating data, controlling variables, evaluating scientific evidence, justifying evidence, or justifying claims based on evidence. And as Mr. Butler stated, you can see that the ACT has been broken down into three strands. IOD 501 has to do with interpretation of data. And then you can see SIN has to do with scientific investigations and there's no model, evaluating models would be the third strand for the ACT scores. So we can take our sample tests on the next page and break those down into those three strands. And we can evaluate student strengths or weaknesses based on those individual strands for their ACT test. Each of these have been loaded into each of our science teachers' trackers. How many are in there right now, Rod? Nine?
Yeah, we have nine of them.
About nine. Some are life science-based, some are physical science-based, and they mirror, like Ms. Drosdorf said, they mirror the, the format of the ACT test. We're incorporating other things like case studies. If you go over here, this is an example of case study and which students are given a scenario and have to analyze data, justify that data, design experiments, maybe given data from a simulated scientific experiment and then asked to justify what that data means. And those are skills that are embedded within our EOC test and our ACT test. So I hope I haven't lost you there.
No. Hey, Scott, then, then in the response by students to determine whether or not they understand, you know, where they're going, are you requiring them to, to write across the curriculum, to, to address these?
Yes, the writing comes in, as specific content within like lab reports. For example, the format that I take on these sample ACT tests, I'll put them in, in groups of four and, and it's Mastery Connect-driven and I'm like, give them two choices. You can, I can either take your score that you actually get on the test, or we can work together as a team in your four students and I'll give you 100 on the, on your, on your assignment. And that way they're helping teach each other basically the skills, how they're evaluating the data and the graphs and I'm there to support them. It's, it's worked pretty well. Did I, did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Tasha.
Okay, Social Studies, you're up.
My name is Gavin Ward. I'm one of the vice principals at Carson High School and I'm over Social Studies and ESL and Fine Arts, but we're here talking about Social Studies today and an ACT plan, which is kind of unique because Social Studies is not tested by the state. And we, we felt like we really wanted to be part of the plan and to support our students. So the greens page, if you look at the green page here, and it has the Social Studies ACT plan. And I'm sitting here with our department chair and Jennifer Chandler and implementation specialist, Ally Cadwell. And...
Thanks for remembering.
So, how are we going to impact the ACT? We looked at reading as being an area that we could have a huge impact for our students. So if you look at the top, it shows World History, US History, and then our Economics and Governments classes are going to be giving students three opportunities to take a previous ACT reading assessment. And I've included the assessments on the green sheet so you can kind of see what those reading assessments look like for World History, for US History, and Government and Econ. And what we did, the individual questions, and this is not anything I did, this is what Jenny and Ally were doing. They took the ACT reading assessment and broke it down to appropriate learning targets and then put it onto Mastery Connect so the students are able to take a 10-question assessment. And then this is able to inform the teachers on kind of what areas students struggle on. And it was kind of interesting, after the first assessment, we had, students were having a tough time with inference. And I thought that was interesting because as a, as a former teacher, how is it that you, how do you teach inference? And so what this is allowing us to do is kind of look at, how do you tackle this? How do we, how do we support our students in taking the ACT if, if they are struggling with inference? So that's one way that we're supporting. We're also, our Social Studies teachers are, have been receiving professional development on reading strategies and reading instruction. That last year, we're starting to work on it some more this year. We are all, also tying our, the ACT Writing Rubric and connecting it to our US History. We created new, new assessments this year. And so we're tying, we're to make it connect with ACT Writing Rubric, we're using their same rubric. Then we've also, I'll let Jen talk a little bit about the Common Reading Assessments. But I think, big picture, we are looking, Social Studies have brand-new content standards. And so we have been developing, when I say we, I said the Social Studies Department has been developing rigorous, rigorous curriculum along with the disciplinary skills that align to ACT because Nevada Academic Content Standards are aligned to Common Core, which is then makes it align to ACT. And we're hoping that by increasing the rigor in our Social Studies classes that our students are going to see that benefit. And it's tough to argue about teaching kids to read well. It's a skill regardless of what they're doing. I don't care if it's ACT or not, that's something we want our students to graduate from Carson High School and, and be quality readers.
Jennifer Chandler, for the record. If you look at the second page in, in the green packet, one of the things that we were faced with was a lot of compiling. And so we took the ACT standards and we took a look at them because Social Studies is obviously a very literacy-heavy subject, whether it's through reading and writing or it's visual literacy skills. And so as you look at the examples in front of you, what we did was we went out and looked for resources that made sure that we were assessing our kids at a very high reading level to make sure that we're developing that perseverance. And so you see samples from each grade level and they're contextualized to the units that our teachers are teaching. So it's embedded in the curriculum because when we were in the training that, that Tasha helped provide for us with Beginning With the End in Mind, one of the common threads that we looked at was the fact that kids, right, what they learn in Mr. Wiley's room, for some reason, they don't think they need to pay attention to that when they get in my class, right? And vice versa, right? That they're not carrying it with them, they don't see it as integrated. So we've really focused in Social Studies of, you know, that stuff that you learn in English, it still applies here. And because that application and that relevance piece for our kids is something that they struggle with. When we gave some of the sample tests to kids, and some of our Social Studies ones are lengthier and take almost a class period, we knew we were doing it right because, because this is long. I don't want, you know, developing that perseverance and going back and being discerning readers, which lines up very well with what we believe as, as Social Studies teachers and I think all teachers, we want our kids to be... all teachers, we want our kids to be discerning citizens. And we want those critical thinking skills, and we want them to analyze what's in front of them. And so these are available in all of our, all of our subject areas. We've got them in the core classes. We've expanded them out to the elective classes, and we're continuing to work to embed them so they flow naturally with our new standards and curriculum. And so that's there for your reference. And then I'm going to let Ally Cadwell talk about our new disciplinary skills and how those align with ACT.
Hi. Ally Cadwell, Social Studies Implementation Specialist. I forgot her on this. Our new Social Study standards are much more rigorous than the old standards. The old standards, if you took a look at them, were very sort of checklist, very low-level, DOK. So the new standards are aligned to Common Core. It's called the C3 Framework. And so they do a lot more evaluation, evaluate, analyze, comparing those kinds of skills. And then they also took what used to be skills, but they weren't really like actual standards. It was just kind of, here are some great skills that you should teach in Social Studies, but now they are identified as actual standards. And so part of our challenge is to create assessments that are also helping kids practice skills like corroborating sources, and citing and evaluating sources, and comparing sources from one to the other, and coming up with counterarguments to a claim that you've made, and those kinds of things, which are really high-level, and really help our students, again, go back to that, applying of those skills to a more difficult reading. When they see something that's challenging them, they'll be able to, the goal is that they'd be able to use those skills that they've picked up, and they can apply it to a more difficult reading and that kind of thing, and be able to work their way through something that's very challenging. And the other thing that, I can't remember if Jenny mentioned it, but that I really liked that we agreed on was, when we're giving the readings, they're cold readings because we want our students to be faced with those longer readings and be able to persevere. But then, if you never talk about what you missed on those, it takes a lot of that value away. So we opened it up and said, yeah, that's awesome. If you want to use those, and hopefully you do use those readings to talk about, if you look at the data from Mastery Connect and everybody missed one of the questions, take a look at that as a class. Take some time to go back and really look at, what is that question asking, and how would you approach that if you came across something like that? Again, to use it as a teaching tool for the skills, but also it's hitting that content as well.
Okay, is there any, right now, we're getting close on time, but questions from the board, comments? You know, I just got one with, and again, let's talk to the two implementation specialists. You know, what you're saying, you're really trying to raise the bar. Do both of you go in the classrooms then and see that this is actually being done?
This year, this has actually come up in SST, but this year I have not been able to get into the classrooms because we have new standards, and we're completing the assessments and that kind of thing. The two years before that, I did have more opportunity, and that is high on the radar for when these are completed, the assessments, that that's, that's the goal, is that we're getting back in there, and we're supporting and coaching our teachers to be able to, you know, better implement the skills themselves.
So Tasha, you sound...
Are you Sarah's same?
...principal. What I'd like to say with that is, Social Studies is obviously in a different place than the rest of our departments in that they have new standards. And science as well. So science has relatively new standards that they're trying to map out. But in math, for instance, Sue, Sarah, and I are doing actually collaborative walkthroughs with our teachers. So our teachers have signed up to go visit each other's classrooms, that we'll be walking through the classrooms with them, checking on, not necessarily checking on, but actually to see other teachers in action and how they're implementing their PLC goals around ACT, and also our instructional goal of implementing focus note-taking in the classroom. So we will be, all of us, the three of us, working with our teachers actually and going into other teachers' classrooms.
Okay, well, what's been presented, you know, let's move backwards from the...
We still have English. We still have English.
All right, English, you're up.
Adam Watley, English teacher at Carson High. As you can see tonight, we've had representation from the Social Studies, the Science, the Math, and now the English Department. I suddenly feel the urge to be a PE teacher. But in actuality, what I wanted to, you know, my joke theory is, I wanted to highlight the fact that English is a curriculum that transcends the English classroom, right? You even look, just glancing at this math test, a student who doesn't understand the word respectively, or mean, I mean, these are all word problems. They're not just, they're not just simple mathematical concepts. They're word problems. And that goes as well with the reading section of the ACT exam. Specifically, English is focused on the two sections of the ACT exam, or rather, one section called English, and it's divided into two parts. One part of it is a writing sample where they synthesize three different perspectives into a single written essay. And that's a timed response as well. The other section, which is what you have before you on the white sheet of paper, looks like this, is what, what to me just looks very savory, but to most students looks quite frightening, which is deciding where commas go. I had a student who took the test the first time and said, "Mr. Watley, you need to teach us what the two dots mean." And I thought, German? No, no. Oh, what, the colon? Oh, okay, I needed to... So what you're seeing on this exam, they have to do this 75-question exam in 45 minutes. So it's, you know, about 46 seconds per question over that course of hour and 15 minutes. So they're going rapid-fire. Fortunately, they don't have to get 100% on any of these sections to do well, to score where we'd like them to score. But the better they do, the better it is for their educational future. So I was gonna, for the sake of brevity, because we are getting a little bit low on time, I was gonna have you take a couple of the questions. You can do that tonight at home, you know, when you're watching the evening news. I certainly will. But what I wanted to tell you real quickly is, I gave this exact test to my students over 45 minutes with the 75 questions as a pre-assessment, and then using that uploaded data, found out where some of their deficits are, gave targeted instruction to that, and now last week gave them a second assessment. And where the real win comes with that, with the ACT, is those students look and they're like, oh, teaching means that I learned stuff, because I got better at this exam. Now, part of that being more effective at the exam is the result of them getting acquainted with the exam itself, right? Not being overwhelmed by 75 questions in a short span of time. But, and part of it is just developing strategies, which a huge part of this test is, right? Any five-hour and 20-minute-long test is going to be about strategies. But also part of it is the realization that direct instruction and realizing, "Mr. Watley, I don't know what the semicolon is. We had better learn that between now and March." And so for me, it acts as a nice guidance for how and what I should be emphasizing as a teacher. The English section, I'll just mention, is not just cross-curricular, as I mentioned, but also longitudinal, right? Like, you're learning English in utero and throughout the entire curriculum. I'm one of 11 specifically English teachers that the students have had. But at the same time, English is in their universe. And so it is the responsibility of the PE teacher, along with the science teacher, to be developing literacy and reading skills. To go to our goals, the, I'm on the white sheet of paper, and now I'm on the third page. The current ELA star rating gave us a five out of 10 points, with only 46.3% of the students scoring an 18 or higher. And we would like to score six out of 10 points, or move that bar from 46.3 to 47.8% of the students scoring an 18 or higher on the ACT exam. Down below there, it shows you what we're doing at each different level from, we did last year after-school instruction for about 30 students tutoring at their own will, to a whole variety between alignment, aligning the Nevada Academic Content Standards with the learning targets that we've developed through the Race to the Top, with the new Pearson textbook materials that are aligned with those standards, to the ACT standards, and kind of finding a way to intermesh them all without losing, I mean, if we just teach them the English section and grammar, they're not learning critical thinking and developing skills that they might need from the other areas of the Nevada Academic Content Standards. So what we're doing is looking at what the ACT is asking our students and saying, where does this fit into what's being taught, and where are the holes in their learning that we need to fill? And with that, I'll hand it to Cynthia.
Hi, Cynthia Mills, ELA Implementation Specialist, for the record. I just wanted to add that this isn't just an 11th-grade issue, so that, you know, we're not hitting the ground running anymore with four months to get these kids ready. We are vertically aligning our curriculum, 6 through 12. And we started, as Adam mentioned, that, you know, we are focusing on the English section, which does deal with a lot of conventions. So we're isolating those conventions and making sure that we're vertically aligned so that when they become freshmen, we know where they're at. So that sophomore year, they can take them a step further. Because what happens with the ACT is, not just understanding comma splices, but they have to actually apply what they know. So every year that they have that practice and get stronger. And so we're developing benchmarks and trying to track that, so that it doesn't fall on the shoulders like the last few years of just the 11th-grade English teachers. That's how the, that's how the teachers felt. And so, and all the teachers are really on board with this, which is great. It's a very positive experience to kind of really be able to be the implementation specialist for 6 through 12, because I can have these conversations all the way down, where before I was just 9 through 12. So I'm getting a lot of cooperation from the middle schools. We have been revising and really working towards that goal. And it's really nice to see all the teachers on board.
Well, we're, you know, we're at, yeah, our time limit. But let me just make a comment, and then maybe the board members want to make a comment or question. And Adam, what you, you know, just described, English, in writing, it's that clarity of thought, and maybe a semicolon, and a colon comes into play to express clarity of thought. But it's, it is reading for understanding, and then writing for the clarity of thought to demonstrate that, that understanding, which comes back across all of what you've said here. If you, it starts with you guys. If a student can't get here and has, or struggling, English, writing, reading, it's going to make it difficult all the way across the curriculum. And so I think what you're doing is, it's long overdue, but thank you for doing it. Because you, that's the benefit to our kids going forward. And that's for not only academic achievement, but success in life. That's, everything, you know, starts right there. So, you know, I'm just looking at the time. So I want to open to the board for any other questions and...
I just want to say, we talked a lot about your plan for the ACT, and I don't think we really celebrated your success adequately. So Carson High School is a huge, huge school, and you guys make it look easy. You guys have fabulous teachers, fabulous staff members, and I think your success makes all of us proud, and makes us look good. And I say congratulations to the CHS staff.
And I would just like to reiterate, my daughter's going into her last semester before she goes into nursing school, and there's not a week that goes by that she doesn't say, "Mrs. Chandler, Mr. Vickery, or Mr. Watley," from a method or skill that she learned. So this isn't all new. You guys have been doing this teaching the whole entire time, and these methods and skills that you're teaching, they're still using, and they recognize that they're using these skills from these teachers. So it's really nice to see that we're just, keep going. But we had that, we've had that base for a long time, and you guys have done a great job teaching it. And it shows in the students that we already graduated and are going on with their lives. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? Joe?
I'll just say, and I heard it from a few of you, you know, getting these kids involved and making them understand early on, somebody said at the beginning of this presentation that, you know, these kids get to 11th grade or whatever, and they don't know why this stuff's important. And I really think hitting this, you know, to their appropriate level, but even elementary school, and making sure these kids, it's kind of ingrained in their head why this stuff's important. I can't tell you how many times I go in and I talk to some classes and talk to students, mostly after the, you know, my presentation, and I ask them questions like that, and they really don't know why they're doing some of this stuff. We didn't in college. You know, why was I sitting through third semester calculus? I had no idea. You know? And so I think getting these kids early on to understand this stuff is critical. I kind of understand it now.
Laurel, Don, any questions? If not, Tasha, thank you, and thank all of you for taking the next step, and just helping our students go forward in life. And so I just can't say enough. And I've been a lot, observed some of the classes, and, you know, we're getting there. So Tasha, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate, Mr. Walker, you bringing up the celebration, because that is another reason I brought my team here, is I have the opportunity and the privilege to be able to come and make presentations to all of you. And I get a lot of accolades and pats on the back, and, you know, kudos for the hard work that we do. And really, it's, it is definitely a team effort. And I am so fortunate to work with all these amazing professionals sitting around me. So thank you so much for your kind words and acknowledging the hard work that my team does, because they are quite simply amazing.
And what we'll do, we'll take about a 10-minute recess right now.
10 minutes?
That one has to go.
Okay, well, now reconvene the Carson City School District School Board meeting. And we'll begin with Agenda Item Number Three, that's the adoption of the agenda as submitted for possible action.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. And before we call for the question, any, you know, issues from the audience? Would you like to change it? Seeing none? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Four, Superintendent's Report. And Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, President Swerzick, members of the board. We have some special guests with us this evening. I'd like to invite, to begin with, Coach Pete Senet of our cross-country program at Carson High School to come forward. He will introduce members of his teams from this year.
Pete Senet, Carson High School cross-country coach. And this is my cross-country team right behind me. And the, thank you for the recognition. I'll go through a little bit just to familiarize the board with our team. And button down the whole time?
No.
Okay. Sue, hello. Joe, Cassiope?
And just if there's any parents in the back that would like to come up behind us and take a picture, you're welcome to.
Okay. Ron, congratulations for all you've done for the school board. It's too bad you're termed out. But thank you for the service that you've given to the board. Laurel, congratulations for, I did a lot of studying on the board, so I knew, the Director of the Year. That's very good. And also, congratulations, two of Laurel's boys are on the JV team that were the second team in the region for the JV championship. So that was very helpful. Thank you. We have a really good group coming up the next couple of years, too. So hopefully we'll be in here to visit with you guys at that time. The, this team is, the cross-country boys and girls are very goal-oriented. We have on the Academic All-State Team, which is 4-0 average, there's four boys on that, there's three girls on that. We had a very ambitious and young girls' team. But they grew fast, and they're figuring out how to train, and so they will be helpful to us next year. They also had a overall grade point average of 3.96, which was pretty good. They missed the top, they were, they missed the top, they missed the top team in the state by, the top team was 3.98, and it's because one of the girls sneezed on a multiple choice question. But it couldn't have got any closer. I will introduce a couple. Hannah Kaiser is someplace back here. Hannah Kaiser was our top girl. It was her first year of running. She got eighth at regionals, fifteenth at state. Katie Schultz, where's Katie? Katie's back there. This is her first year of running, really. And she challenged herself a little more than everybody else because she broke her toe like the first week of practice. So she had to make it through that month. And she got stronger and stronger. Is Erin here? No, Erin's not here. Ginger is right here, multiple sport athlete. And she's going to be a big help to us next year. I think we've got a good foundation of kids coming up for the next year. The, this isn't really as long as it looks. The boys, Ethan Biasi is right over here. Ethan, he's a senior. He got 14th at regionals. He was second team, and also 15th at state. Jacob Crossman, he's a sophomore. And he's, he's here because he was a very chivalrous, chivalrous person. He actually gave his spot on the varsity to one of the other boys because he felt he could compete a little better. But Jacob was a tremendous athlete for us this year, and he's got incredible strength and academics, and he's going to be really big for us in the future. Walker McKenzie, where's Walker? Take about Walker. Walker was a great addition to the team. This is his first year of cross-country running. He was essential. You know, we went from the seventh team in the North last year to the third-best team in the state, when there's 38 4A teams. So these kids did a great job. They trained hard. They kept believing in themselves all year, and they had really excellent success. Hunter Rao, take about Hunter, Hunter Rao, he's a, he's a senior. He's been a leader for us for the last four years of kind of corralling the kids, getting to concentrate on what they needed to do, taking a role as leaders. Leaders is not the easiest thing to do among your friends, but he's done a really good job of that. Zach, where's Zach? Okay, Zach, just raise your hand back there, Zach. Zach's improved as much as any runner in the state. He got third at regionals, ninth at state, first-team regionals. He had a great season. The, let's see, have I forgotten anybody back here? Gabe? Gabe was also in the JV team. He did, we're going to have the Crossman family. We appreciate your kids. You know, it's, you have to have, like, in some sports, you can have three or four good kids. But in cross-country, you have to have five good runners to compete. If you don't have five good runners, you just can't be in the mix for things. And so next year, we've got a lot of good kids coming up, and I think they're going to have success just like we had this year, hopefully. There used to be no place for kids to go after they got out of high school as far as in-state competitiveness. University dropped the program. And, but now Rick Traichak, who was a runner when I was at UNR and was Chairman of the Board of Regents, he's kind of spearheaded a commission to start running at the university again. It'll start with a small group of informal runners cross-country, which will also be allowed to compete in track and field, and will build into a structured scholarship-type program eventually. And not too long a time either. It'll go pretty quick. And it's, it's, fitness is, it's one of the joys of life. And I think what you get out way more than you put into it. And for the kids to be able to stay here and to compete after they get out of high school, it's a really, really nice opportunity for them instead of having to go to another state. The, let's see, we appreciate you guys providing the platform for us to go out and reach our goals and reach our dreams as far as the competitive school sports program is. But I would, you know, as you guys threw deliberations and considerations trying to decide how to split up money, youth activity and youth sports and youth involvement is really important, not just to their physical... Your butt? This is very tech, this office. I'm not used to this. So the, and it's not just competitive sports. You know, kids now, they're on Snapchat, a lot of bad things, Facebook, cell phones. And, you know, they kind of lose, if you don't get become involved in sports when you're young, or in just physical activity, you kind of lose that, and you don't ever get it back in life. And I think, when I was in school, we had pretty much PE all the way through high school. And it doesn't have to be hard, competitive sports, but people need to be active. I've seen young kids that normally they would have taken and put them on drugs, but the parents wouldn't do that. Both their parents were doctors, and they let the kids just run and exercise. And within two or three years, these kids became incredibly mature and focused people. I think the schools can provide an avenue to help do that. I'm not sure how it is, because some kids are pretty, especially boys, like me, we are pretty rowdy. But there's got to be a way to blend in a lot of free PE time when kids can run and play with the academic part of school. I think it's really essential. These guys are a good example of that. These guys are top students, top athletes, and top people. And so we appreciate you guys recognizing them for their efforts this year. Thank you. So I even brought a headline from that appeal, so you could see that. It wasn't just me talking. Move more, sit less, and start younger. So we'll do that. Thank you.
Well, first of all, congratulations to all of the student athletes. You guys were, you're a fine example of what Carson High is about. But let me, let me just ask Hunter, since you, you kind of led the way, you've been in here four years. Now, what have you learned from cross-country? And then where are you going forward with your life? What's your next step in life?
I'm Hunter Rao, and you asked the question, what has this cross-country program, what have I learned from it? I have learned so many things. I have learned how to persevere through any amount of toughness. Like, I never thought that I'd be able to overcome the 18-minute mark in cross-country in this year. I did really well with that. I surpassed that mark by, I think, I think a minute and 30 seconds. It put me really high in the standards this year. And not only has it taught me how to persevere in running, but like, it's also taught me how to persevere in school. I've had really tough assignments with English papers that I just never thought I'd be able to get done. And then I just kept working on it, kept working on it, took a little break, as my cross-country coach taught me how sometimes you need little breaks, and then you get right back to work. And I do that. And I've been able to accomplish really excellent papers, and I passed my AP test with that, too, with a three on it. And I kind of use that strategy. I would focus on writing one paper. I'd slow down, take a break, recapture myself, and then I'd continue writing my next paper. And with that strategy, it really worked. It's also taught me who I want to become, because my cross-country coach, Peter Senet, has become one of my idols in my life. He is just such a positive attitude on anything. He doesn't like thinking negatively. And I really tried to take that away from him, because with that, when you have that mindset, you become a lot more open to ideas, and you just become a better person. And I think Peterson is one of the best people in this town.
And now your next step, where are you going from here, using this?
I plan on attending UNR because they're starting the running program in 2021, it is, I believe. I'm going to join the running club next year. And I'm really excited. But I'm still open for opportunities from track, because I'm doing track this year. I'm an 800 runner. I made it to state last year. I plan on making it to state this year. And I'm hoping to break the school record this year. I would like to see where that takes me. I really hope to get athletic and academic scholarship, because right now I have a 3.8 unweighted and a 4.23 weighted GPA. So I'm really hoping to receive a scholarship to go to some school, because I would really like to continue running, because it's my passion now. I really love it.
Thank you. And Pete, now who's your assistant over here?
She's one of the runners. I just didn't introduce her. Yeah, she's coming, she'll be starting next year. That's Coach Jackie Rao, Hunter's mom. And she's, she was a PE teacher for 30 years at Carson High School. She'd been a blessing, really, for me the last couple of years. She, she grew up in a big family. I won't tell you the story of that. But she, she's been a blessing. She's great with kids. She comes to the workouts and works out with us every day. She'll ride her bike 20 miles in the morning, come to the workouts in the afternoon. You know, we'll play soccer. We'll do a lot of stuff, hill repeats. And she's, I think it's especially important that you learn to enjoy work, and you learn to enjoy the people that you're around, no matter where you're at. Because no matter where you are, your job or whatever, you're going to have people that are a little harder to get along with. Jackie gets along with people all the time. She notices, you know, kids that need a little more attention, they need a little more nurturing, and she'll take care of them. And so Hunter also wants to go into to be a teacher. And that's like, you know, it's like incredible field. You know, the rewards are excellent emotionally. And that's one of the reasons that I actually coached, though, because it's like, you have to be really, it's like controlled chaos, you know, even in, even in a small sport like we have. But it makes you think all the time. It makes you work, and it makes you, if you really want to teach kids, you really have to set an example for them. Like, I've seen coaches that, you know, they don't set examples for kids in the things that they do. And the kids lose all enthusiasm. They lose their energy, not just for the sport, but for a lot of things in life. Because like, your attitude is everything. You've just got to really work hard and believe in yourself all the time. And Jackie, she was really a big asset. I'm going to, if you guys know of anybody that's going to be assistant cross-country coach next year, let me know, because I'll be looking for one. Jackie moved up higher on the ladder someplace. I don't know where she went. Yeah, so.
Well, again, thank you to all of you, all you athletes, for what you've done for, for the high school and for yourselves. And Pete, thank you for the guidance and your example in what you've given to these kids.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Any other comments from the board?
I just wanted to congratulate all of you. I think, number one, congratulations for your accomplishments. And number two, congratulations for putting up with Pete. Pete's a handful. No, actually, Pete's a great coach. I mean, you're all so lucky to have him. My son ran cross-country for, I think, all four years under Pete, had a great time. I volunteered with Pete for those, those four years. And Pete made it fun. Pete, you made it a lot of fun. And I think, again, you're not just creating runners, but you're really creating good people and good citizens. And, you know, that's what cross-country, along with other sports, does for you, is it teaches you that you can go farther than you think you can. So congratulations to all of you, and keep running.
Thanks. Thank you.
Just congratulations, guys. I've watched you all season. You've had such growth. And I'm just so proud of you. And you guys are so inspiring to me and to so many others that do it. Every one of you out there that's doing it, keep running, kiddos.
Because we really have had really good support, like, throughout the community this year, and through the parent commitment to our sport. Because, like, I don't just go to the track and run around the track. We go to Spooner Summit. We go to Edmunds Field. We go to Washoe Lake. We had our race virtually in Washoe Lake this year. And so, it was kind of neat, actually, just to show, when you throw a different experience towards kids, they're a little bit timid and have some trepidation at first. But then the more they see how the experience can help them to grow, they get more confident in themselves, and they have way more energy, not just for that event, but for taking challenges on in general after that point. And like, we go, we take a hike up to Cloud's Rest in the summertime, like a team bonding thing, which is like incredible. And it's just, a lot of kids never get out to get that kind of nature experience. So we try to do that. And it takes a big effort from the parents to be with us, to help the kids be together, to become familiar with each other, and to just get the basic fabric of the, what we're going to be doing for the next year. Because like, you know, these guys, they've, it really teaches you time management, how to multitask, because all these kids are top students. Like, when I was in school, I don't... Like, when I was in school, I don't remember doing homework. Now, I must have done it because I got out of school, I got out of college, so I must have done homework sometime, but I thought, these guys, they, they're very structured, disciplined lives, you know, they go, they got honors classes, they go to school, a lot of them are in clubs or, um, uh, school, uh, positions, vice president, uh, we have the vice president of the junior class, is that what you?
President.
Vice, excuse me, president. And so, and so, but those, those clubs take a lot of time and you have to be able to, you know, and to do, um, fitness is good no matter what you do, but this is like a competitive team. And to make this team fun, you have to be good. That's just part of it. You can come out and you can run and be okay, but you, you don't have the energy, you don't have the, the, uh, the emotional, um, excitement of actually competing for the championship. Like, we all year long, we were, like, we were seventh last year in Spanish Springs, which is a very good team, they're last year's boys champion. You know, we were trying to beat them all year and finally at the regional championships, we beat them. And it was like incredible, I mean, it was like incredible thing. And they had, the top boy in the state actually fell on that race and he didn't get to finish for Spanish Springs, which was, um, pretty, it was kind of sad for them, but they still got to go to state and then the next week, so we beat them fair and square after the week after that. But it just showed the kids' commitment over a long period of time, like, running in the, the MAC Center, running in the, some, in the Smoke Some, running at night when it's hot or cold and just being, showing that your commitment to certain things can really make a big difference in the long run. But things just don't happen overnight. You got to work hard for a long time. Okay, okay. Hi, Susan.
Any other comments, uh, from the board?
Yes.
Jackie, any, uh, any comments you'd like to make?
Make, make her say something. Make her say something. Don't let her get away without saying something.
All right. So, again, thank, thank all of you for what you've done. And, and again, Pete and Jackie, thank you for taking the time to guide these kids.
Thank you. Okay.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Mr. President, members of the board, recently, the State Superintendent of Instruction, Steve Canavero, created a new group, an advisory group of teachers. And he put out an invitation to teachers in the state of Nevada to participate and to apply for this position. We are fortunate to have a member of our own teaching staff, Dr. Leanne Morris, who was selected for this honor. And we even invited her here today to tell us a little bit about this next, um, venture. And, uh, Dr. Morris, welcome. Turn some time over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, for inviting me this evening. President Swarzick, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to talk a little bit about this new, um, experience. As Mr. Stokes mentioned, um, the Superintendent Canavero, uh, put together this advisory cabinet. There were 81 teachers from around the state that applied, um, from the initial paper screening, if you will. Forty-one of us were interviewed over the phone and then 21 were selected. Um, of course, I'm representing Carson City School District, I'm very proud of that. Uh, there is a representative from Lyon County, Elko County, um, a teacher from the state charter authority, um, uh, state charter school authority, and then the rest of the cabinet is made up of Clark County and Washoe County teachers. We, um, met two weeks ago in Las Vegas, uh, for an orientation meeting and, um, we're, we're just getting started. It's a two-year term, but I'm very, very excited to be a voice for all of the wonderful educators. As I was sitting here this evening, um, thinking about all of the wonderful things that Carson High School represented and all of the teachers that I have the opportunity, opportunity to represent. Uh, I, um, have a fabulous position in our district to be able to work with every teacher in our district. And I, uh, feel that, um, that having that voice at the state level is something that has really been needed for a long time. And, um, just to be able to provide input on some of the topics and, um, some of the things that we talked about at this, uh, initial orientation meeting were, um, student outcomes, of course, raising achievement for all students, um, equitable access to lots of different things. Effective teachers, um, our technology, which of course is the world that I live in, um, you know, increasing, diversifying, and retaining teachers and recruiting teachers. We know that that is a serious issue, um, as we think about it in our district, but also statewide. Elevating the teaching profession, just being able to tell our story. I think about all of the great things that, uh, Mr. Dan Davis has been able to do to help tell our story here in Carson City. And what does that look like and how, you know, I can help get that voice even at the state level now with all the great things that our teachers are doing. And then, um, one of the other, uh, topics that I hope that we'll be able to advise on as well is the social, emotional, and academic development of our students as we move forward. So, um, we've had one piece of, um, policy that Superintendent Canavero has shared out with us and asked for some feedback on. Uh, we will be meeting face-to-face again in February and in May. Meanwhile, between those times, we'll use our technology to be able to stay in touch and, uh, determine, um, what, what we can do to help advise what's going on at the Nevada Department of Education. So, I don't know if any of you have any questions for me, but I just, I don't want to take too much time, but certainly want to try to answer.
No, not Leanne. Dr. Morris. No, congratulations, um, for just being appointed. And it's a, it's a, what you just described, it's, it's a pretty important, uh, position going forward. And, and how you're going to represent, you know, Carson High, or not Carson High, but the Carson City School District, um, of what we can accomplish, what we can add to the state, and what, what things we can learn and you can bring back, uh, you know, to our district. Um, and, you know, I'm really kind of excited that you get a chance to talk about artificial intelligence, uh, at the state level. Uh, it's a serious thing going, going forward. So, but again, congratulations and, and thank you for applying. Questions, any other questions or comments from the board?
Leanne, I just want to, like, congratulations, of course, but I just want to thank you for everything you do for our school district. I know when I, uh, when I'm finally getting out of my office, sometimes it, you know, later than I want to, and on Wednesdays, I'll go over and kind of like corral my wife out of there. And, you know, you're always there with everybody and just, you know, providing the support everybody needs, all the teachers and everybody needs to, you know, to do the job that's being asked of them, which is no small task. So, I mean, thank you for your involvement and for everything you do.
You're welcome. I, I feel that that's really my job, um, supporting the teachers and being their advocate and their voice here in the district and now to take it to this level at the state.
Good for you.
And, and I'd just like to reiterate that it's really important, the experiences that you've brought to this district and the collaboration that you've instilled, I think it's just going to be amazing on the state level. And, and we've seen from being able to serve on state levels that it's nice to be able to bring that rule aspect, especially when you have so many Washoe and Clark people there. And yet, we're still different than a lot of the rules. So, I think it, I'm so excited to hear about what you guys are going to do and, and your progress. And if there's anything we can do, let us know.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Leanne.
Have fun.
Dr. Morris, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I turn the time back over to you.
Okay, moving on to agenda number five, um, the board reports, board member comments, and we'll, uh, start from, with the representative from Carson High.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, the boys' basketball team's first game of the regular.
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, sorry about that. My name is Ryan Lawler. I'm a junior student body school board representative for Carson High School. The boys' basketball first game of the regular season is going to be on December 4th against McQueen High School at Carson High School. As well as the girls' varsity team is also going to be December 4th against McQueen at Carson. The next Carson High School Student Council meeting is going to be Wednesday, December 5th, in the library at 2:05, which is right after school. And that's open to any Carson High School students or anybody who'd like to come, especially representatives from clubs at Carson High School. And the ACT will be held December 8th at 8:00 AM. And the last day of the semester for all Carson High School students is going to be Friday, December 21st.
Thank you. Casey, Pioneer?
Hello there, my name is Casey Beaufort. I'm from Pioneer High School. Congratulations to Mr. Corbett for the Samsung Solfamara Contest recognition. This is a great honor. Samsung sponsors a nationwide contest and challenges public school teachers and students in grades six to 12 to show how STEM can be applied to help improve their local community. Thousands of applications were sent in and Mr. Corbett's plan was selected as one of the five finalists from the state of Nevada. The plan explains how STEM can be used for a water bottle or filling station so that students and other community members can have access to fresh, clean drinking water. As a finalist, Mr. Corbett and his crew will move on to the next phase of contest, wishing the best of luck. And, and another thing is a special thanks for our Thanksgiving Day breakfast initiative. Mr. Jordan, Ms. Allen, Ms. Ward, Ms. Corley, and the JAG classes, and all the staff who donated turkeys. Pioneer High School and JAG will be collecting non-perishable good, December, non-perishable goods, December 3rd through 14th. November 29th is the JAG field trip to Tesla. It should be a great experience and a learning experience for all the seniors and juniors going.
Thank you, Casey.
Just got a few things. A busy week next week, uh, there's some music activities going on. Uh, Carson Middle School in the cafeteria, Tuesday, December 4th is their musical theater concert, followed, uh, Wednesday, also in the cafeteria at 7:00 PM, is a choir concert. And then, uh, at the high school, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, all in the community center, starts, uh, Tuesday with the Strings Orchestra Winter Concert. And if I'm not mistaken, that includes, I think, middle school students as well. December 5th is the Musical Theater Choral Concert. And then Thursday, December 6th is the, uh, will be the Band Concert at 7:00 PM in the community center.
Laurel?
Uh, Carson Middle School is hosting a PTA meeting. It might be over, but they were having, um, some school resource officers and some really important stuff. So, if you're wanting to go there, you can dash over and see if they're still available tonight. Um, for Fritch Elementary School, they are having a PTA meeting currently and a fundraiser at the Pizza Factory. So, if you haven't had dinner and want to go pick up a pizza at the Pizza Factory, you can support the Fritch PTA by doing so. Thanks.
Okay, what is it? Joe?
Um, no report tonight. I think Carson City has been, Carson High School's been thoroughly covered.
Mike?
Sure, I have a few items. Boarder Wick Bray would like to report they had their first parent coffee this morning and it was a huge success. And they want to remind everybody that they have their winter band and choir concert coming up on December 19th. So, at 6 o'clock, they'll have the band concert and at 6:45 will be the choir concert. If you're going to attend, I suggest you attend both. Uh, Fremont Elementary School would like to let the parents know that due to construction starting, they will be limiting the number of daytime events they have. So, most of those events you'll have probably for the rest of the year will be evening-type events. And that includes the shop to shop and drop evening for parents to shop and drop their kids off to have babysitting by the PTA. And they're going to do that on December 14th at 5:30. And that concludes my report.
Stacy?
Um, Mark Twain would just like to remind everybody that their band and choir concert is September 12th. And then probably my last update from Nevada Association of School Boards, because I am no longer president, I'm immediate past president. And Laurel was, um, elected vice president, so that'll probably be your duty now. And that moves you into the director spot because you're the alternate director. But we had a great conference, um, well-received by everybody. We had two former national school board, uh, presidents there that gave great talks. Um, our whole board attended, even our two newbies, and that was awesome to see. And we had some great sponsorship by Wells Fargo and others. And as you'll find out later in the agenda, that we did really well in the awards department too. So, it was a good weekend.
Okay, I don't have, uh, any board reports tonight, but let me just recognize that our two, um, school trustees elect, uh, we have Lupe Ramirez from District 1 here, uh, in attendance, and then Richard Varner, uh, from District 4. And they'll be, uh, taking over a couple seats up here, uh, come January 1st. With that, we'll proceed with the agenda. And that's, uh, Agenda Item Number 6, association reports. Uh, Agenda Item Number 7, public comment. This is for, um, any of you that would like to come forward to talk on any agenda related to the school that is not on the agenda for tonight's discussion. Just state your name for the record?
Adrian Freeman.
Oh, go ahead, just, uh, yeah.
Adrian Freeman, for the record. Good evening to all of you. Um, thank you for allowing me to express my opinion. I am a retired educator, um, a current substitute volunteer, and concerned taxpayer. And I am a bit dismayed by some of the decisions that have been made by the school board, this, not school board, school district this year. Every school site seems to be short of full-time accredited classroom teachers. Every school site seems to have long-term classroom substitutes, and many of these are student teachers. I am concerned about the counterintuitive practice of student teachers teaching classes in lieu of the teacher and essentially not receiving the master teacher instruction. This is a disservice to the students as well as to the teacher in training. I realize there is a nationwide shortage of teachers, but I believe that in order for students to reach, reach their full potential, every classroom should have a minimum of one qualified teacher. If this means hiring retired teachers, hiring part-time teachers to co-teach, or pulling some teachers on temporary assignment back into the classroom, then I think that's what needs to happen. I am concerned by the number of highly qualified coaches and implementation specialists that we have in this district when an inordinate amount of actual students are being taught by non-qualified individuals. And I would like these issues to be addressed to the satisfaction of educators, parents, and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you for your information. And I'm sure that you're working with our superintendent. Richard on this?
Not much, a little bit this summer. But I'm happy to work with our superintendent.
Sure, just work with him and, and with Jose. And like you said, there's a national shortage of teachers.
I understand. I understand.
I just want to say that I appreciate you saying that because I've been saying that for a very long time and it's, it's a big concern of mine and so I share your concerns.
Okay, moving on to, um, Agenda Item Number 8, which is the presentation of the 2018-19 Carson City School District Board-sponsored American Citizens Essay Contest winners. And, uh, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're pleased to have with us this evening families and students who have participated and won in the 17th Annual Board American Citizens Essay Contest. This year, we had 251 total entries. Seventy-eight were from the elementary school, 67 from the middle school, and we had 106 high school entries. So, we had, uh, really nice, a nice number of entries to this year's contest. The topic was, uh, very good. It was, it was an interesting topic and I'd like to read it. "Freedom of speech is a cornerstone of our democracy, but sometimes it takes bravery to advocate for what you believe. Describe a time that you or someone you know or a historical figure was brave and advocated their belief." So, uh, some thinking, some, uh, good stuff to write about. And, uh, obviously, it was well-received by, as you can see, by the number of total entries that we had. The applicants, those who submitted their, uh, their, uh, work, were judged on, one, adherence to the topic, two, quality of writing, and three, originality of thought. We'd like to give special thanks to a panel of judges. If any of them are here, I'd like for them to stand and take a bow. This was no small feat to read all of these student, uh, entries. We have Lacey Carey, Lori Shine, Hillary Mendegia, Robin Williams, and Pam Copperthwaite, who are instructors in this, in the school district. And from Wells Fargo Bank, we have Lynn Heisling. And I'd like to invite Lynn to come forward and, uh... And I'd like to invite Lynn to come forward and sit with me here at the table. Thank you, Lynn, for your ongoing support. As you know, the trustees put up cash towards honoring those winners, and also Wells Fargo through, Ms. Heisling has also generously supported this contest throughout the years. So the first-place winners will receive $80, second-place winners $30 cash prize, and third-place winners $15. We would like to begin by recognizing the third-place winner in the elementary category from Mark Twain Elementary School, 5th grader Elijah Williams. Elijah, come up and get recognized. So Elijah, let me shake your hand, come over here and join me. Smile for the camera right there. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. And is Mrs. Brady your teacher? Congratulations.
Thank you. And here's your parents.
And parents, just a quick reminder, please feel free to come behind us and get a good picture. You're more than welcome to, so don't be shy.
Our second-place winner in the elementary school category, also from Mark Twain Elementary, Natalie Maldonado.
And each of our first-place winners, we've asked if they would share their essay with the board and with the audience tonight. And our first-place winner from Seeliger Elementary is Hannah Budd, 5th grader.
Every single person in the United States of America has the freedom of speech, but not all people have the courage to use it for a good cause. One person who was brave enough to stand up for his beliefs and change the lives of many was Martin Luther King Jr. Because he stood up for his beliefs that all people should have equal rights, no matter what color their skin, he was able to change history for both black and white people. Martin Luther King Jr. was an amazing person. He believed that black people and white people should be equal. In his famous speech, "I Have a Dream," he said, "I have a dream that one day, right here in Alabama, little black boys and little black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and little white girls as brothers and sisters." Martin also stated, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." He didn't just dream about that, he acted upon it. He was a great man and didn't stand down even when it was hard. He used peace, not violence, while protesting for black people to have equal rights. He gave many speeches and led many protests and boycotts. Almost all of his life was devoted to standing up for his beliefs, that all people, no matter what color their skin, should have equal rights. He didn't stand down no matter what. He stood up for what he believed, even when he was persecuted. Martin Luther King Jr. didn't stop when he watched black people get beat and shot in the streets when they were speaking out for equal rights, as if their lives didn't matter. He continued, even when he was arrested, his house was bombed, and he was beaten. He persisted even in front of 250,000 people in Washington, D.C., where he gave his famous speech, "I Have a Dream." Imagine if your house is bombed. Think of being arrested for peacefully protesting. Imagine that you were doing something that was considered crime in order to bring peace and justice. What if the cops were out on the street, shooting people and hurting people just because they had dark skin? Picture how horrible that would be, and how hard it would be to still stand up for your beliefs. Martin Luther King Jr. was a man who had an unbelievable amount of courage and strength, and used the freedom of speech to change the course of history. Now, all men are considered equal because of the major contributions of one man with dark skin and the courage to stand up for his beliefs and use the freedom of speech. On August 28th, 1963, Martin Luther King Jr. stood on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial. This was during the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. There, he said words that would change the history for many, many people. He spoke concerning the fact that black people should have equal jobs and freedom, and that all people, no matter what color or their skin, should have equal rights. Speaking in front of 250,000 people must have been difficult, because he was fully aware that this event could end in violence. He chose to be courageous, though, and pressed on. All people might not have had civil rights then, but everyone had this freedom of speech, and Martin Luther King Jr. was one person who was brave enough to use this to stand up for what he believed. I think that Martin Luther King Jr. was an amazing person, who had the bravery to stand up for his belief that all people, no matter black or white, should have equal rights. I'm glad that he was courageous, because he changed history for the better.
Well done, those who are here representing their respective categories. You know, I think, even though I've had the opportunity to introduce these students each year, I've failed to recognize their teachers. And while I don't know them individually by name regarding which students are theirs, I just want to say thank you to the professionals for the hard work that they have contributed, and I'm grateful for their efforts. Next, I'd like to read the names of the winners for our middle school category. From Bethlehem Lutheran School, 6th grader Joshua Fox placed 3rd in the middle school category. In 2nd place, from Carson Middle School, we have 6th grader Eva Lindblum. And our 1st-place winner in the middle school-level competition is Sarah Denny, 8th grader at Bethlehem Lutheran School.
Throughout American history, there have been many people who have been brave and stood up for what they believed in. One person who stands out to me is Harriet Tubman. She faced many dangers, not just escaping slavery, but helping other slaves escape through the Underground Railroad. She also risked her life as a cook, a spy, and a nurse in the Civil War. When she was helping slaves escape, she was very brave. In a 10-year span, she freed over 300 slaves from the South. That was a very dangerous thing to do. Even in the North, if she was caught, she could be hanged, and the slaves would be sent back to their owners. 10 years is a long time, and she dedicated 10 years going back and forth, saving people she did not even know. She herself was an escaped slave and faced many dangers. Having to trust the Underground Railroad conductor, at any time on the trail, she could have been caught, starved, or froze. That was nothing compared to what freedom could give her. As a slave, she had some family members taken away from her, and she was worked from a young age to the time she escaped. Even though she still worked hard on the railroad, at least she could save others from which she and many others, including people she had saved, had faith. During the Civil War, African-Americans were not allowed to serve. Harriet Tubman took advantage of that and served as a cook, a spy, and a nurse. She believed in the cause enough to risk her life. She provided food and medical attention for the soldiers, two things to keep people alive. As a spy, she risked being caught by the Confederates. She could be thrown in prison or killed. She risked her lives many times in many different ways for one cause she believed in so strongly. It was not just a cause she read about, it was something she was a victim of, something her family members and many of her friends were victims of. I can never imagine having to go through what she went through. She was an amazing and brave woman. I think she showed this through her determination to end slavery by any means possible. I can't believe how she risked her life for others, many times through her life. For another example, one time, an owner was mad at his slave and threw a weight at him. Harriet was there and got hit in the head with it instead of it hitting the man. This changed her whole life. The injury caused dizziness, pain, and spells of hypersomnia. She was still a kid when this happened. I find it so impressive that she would do that for a random stranger. Harriet was an amazing person I believe we can all look up to and try to be more like. I think she's a great example of being brave and standing up for what you believe in.
Very nicely done. Onto our high school winners. In 3rd place, we have, from Carson High School, Dylan Bloomfield. Unfortunately, our 2nd-place winner could not attend tonight, but from Carson High School, Mr. Cade Pronk. And our 1st-place winner in the high school category from Carson High School is 12th grader Carla Torres.
It is 1968. The crowd is roaring. The lights brighten the faces of the winners as they take their places on the podium. A fist is raised, and then another. Silence. It is the announcement of the winners of the 200-meter race at the Mexico City Olympics. Athletes Tommy Smith and Giancarlo's raised two fists as a symbol of black power and in support of the civil rights movement occurring in the United States at the time. In a time of such turmoil, these athletes had a choice. They could do their jobs as runners, or they could recognize the long-held mistreatment of black Americans in the United States. The actions of these athletes define bravery in ways few people in our history have ever exhibited. Smith and Carlos faced a crowd of people from all around the world, but most directly they faced Americans. These athletes, with their heads bowed, wearing black socks, hanging beads around their necks, and with fists high in the air, demonstrated the hypocritical sentiment of Americans in that moment, those who booed and yelled slurs as the National Anthem played. Because what is the point of being proud of an American accomplishment but denying fundamental rights to the Americans who worked tirelessly to achieve it? These athletes, using the right to peaceful protest, illuminated upon the darkness of racist oppression, not only to those people in the crowd, but to those who watched on television sets in every corner of the world in that moment. Every single person who understood called it brave. The utilization of the right to freedom of speech has been a catalyst to every single political and social reformation in the United States. The colonists chanted "No Taxation Without Representation." In the Declaration of Sentiments from the Seneca Falls Convention, Elizabeth Cady Stanton wrote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal." And college students across America participated in sit-ins at white-only counters in restaurants during the civil rights movement. These are the moments in our history that have inspired change. These people all faced tremendous consequence, ranging from being cast from society, to being thrown into jail, or even staring into the wicked eyes of death itself. Carlos and Smith faced their own consequences. They were quickly rushed from the podium in order to leave the stadium. They were suspended from the U.S. track team and received various death threats for their demonstration. Even though they faced the negative aspects of going against what a large portion of their society deemed deceptible, the positive consequence of their actions were far more impactful. Ultimately, the purpose of Smith and Carlos' protests was not to create direct conversation with government representatives or instantly change the inequalities of the age, it was to bring about awareness. During that time period, there were many peaceful protests, most regarding the Vietnam War, others led by student organizations and the civil rights movement. Through their symbolic protests, Smith and Carlos have inspired the actions of others, even to this day. On September 12th, 2016, before the 49ers played the Los Angeles Rams, football player Colin Kaepernick kneel during the National Anthem to protest police brutality against black Americans and in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. Kaepernick cited his use of peaceful protests as being inspired from the demonstrations of other people in history, including Tommy Smith and Giancarlo's. Anger and disgust and cries of anti-Americanism preceded Kaepernick's demonstration. In truth, despite the responses from the public, Kaepernick was exercising his right to freedom of speech through peaceful protest. There was truly no more American way to bring awareness to his cause. Kaepernick's protest served its purpose, to shed light upon an issue affecting black Americans. Tommy Smith and Giancarlo's did the same through their own utilization of the right to freedom of speech, thus becoming an integral part of the civil rights movement in American history. These men, through their fight for justice and through their application of American methodology, defined what it means to be an American and defined what it means to be brave. Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, for those who don't know, Carla was actually in my class. So she was the girl who made us listen to Justin Bieber. She was a 3rd grader who always excelled in everything we did, including writing. But I think, I just want to say I'm proud of you, because oftentimes, as an elementary teacher, you see kids when they're young, and you don't get to see them in 12th grade and the successes they're having. And so it's just really a great honor to see how well you're doing.
Could we get the 1st-place, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, but the 1st-place winners, could we get them all up here for a photograph?
I think the elementary went home.
Well, wasn't that the...
We have these two, this works.
Yeah, we'll get these two.
Oh, is she? Oh, there she is. Give her homework, pass.
Sung by Mr. Schultz.
Okay, all 3 winners, congratulations, and you did just a wonderful job in your writing, your writing skills and what you portrayed as bravery. Okay, recognition of 2018 Nevada Association of School Boards, award recipients, and Richard, we'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, as was mentioned earlier during our board reports, Trustee Wilkie had indicated that the recent NASB Fall Conference had been held. And part of that Fall Conference is an opportunity to recognize school board members, administrators, volunteers, teachers, school staff in general, for outstanding work. And we were very fortunate to have a number of individuals from Carson City School District recognized. And with your permission, Mr. President, I would like to read the accolades given to those who were recognized at this event down in Las Vegas. First, I'd like to start with Director of the Year, which is a position held by a member of each of the 17 school districts within the state of Nevada. And these directors essentially serve as the functioning board of the Nevada Association of School Boards. And our very own Laurel Crossman was selected as the Director of the Year. Said of Mrs. Crossman, "As with all of her NASB duties, Laurel Crossman has approached her director's assignment with the intent of fully representing Nevada's children's educational needs. She has served on many committees within NASB, including the Nomination and Awards Committee, Training and Professional Development Committee, and the Audit Committee. Her insightful review and input to the Audit Committee led to significant changes in the process, which helped to close an existing loophole and contributed to the enhanced transparency of process. During the last two and a half years, she has served as NASB's representative on Nevada's English Mastery Council. This council plays a vital role in Nevada's English Language Learner, or ELL, program, reviewing and making recommendations regarding licensing requirements for teachers, instructional practices and policies for the state and individual districts, and standards and curriculums. In the annual review of all the district's ELL policies, Mrs. Crossman's skill with policy detail, mastery of the language, and adroit observations were all well-received and contributed to the successful conclusion of the work. She has a proven track record of proficiency and success in her work, and we're grateful that she works in our school district." Congratulations. Next, I would like to invite to the table here to join me, Sarah Lobzinger and Jennifer As described by the folks of NASB, this award recognizes the invaluable service provided to Nevada's children by those individuals who demonstrate their leadership by promoting and implementing innovative programs designed to improve student achievement. During the recent refreshing of the district's strategic plan, an objective was proposed to, quote, "grow your own teachers." In response to the current teacher shortage, Sarah Lobzinger and Jennifer Chandler quickly developed an idea to introduce some of Carson High School's very best students to the idea of choosing public education as a career pathway. They approached their principal for permission to work with the University of Nevada Reno to provide a dual-credit course as an elective. Soon, UNR and Carson High School offered the dual-credit introductory education course, EDU 110, for Carson High students interested in pursuing careers in education. Students in the course visited different schools in the district to observe classrooms, partnered with teacher leaders to learn individual and instructional strategies, developed and delivered lesson plans, wrote research papers on current topics in education, and learned what it takes to be an educator. The interest and enrollment numbers for the course continued to grow, from 15 in the first year to about 35 in the following year. Their work has opened doors for Carson High School students about the importance of pursuing careers in teaching, and we're very grateful that they teach in our district. Mrs. Lobzinger and Mrs. Chandler.
Well, Sarah, and Jennifer, do you want to, yeah, you're coming back in a different role. Now, anything you want to add to this? Because we're all, you know, really proud of what you've done, you know, for our kids, and going forward, and hopefully having teachers come back right here. So, anything that you want to add to this?
I would like to say that I really appreciate being honored for this award. However, I really am just happy that the program is being recognized. And I think if that means that, you know, we get awards, that's fine. I just want people to know that it's happening and that we have students that want to be here, they want to teach for us, and I'm just excited to be part of it. And I can't wait to see, you know, the numbers continue to grow, and then watch those students come back.
If I can make a comment, because I was on the committee, the awards committee, and this is a category that has a lot of nominations from each of the districts. And when we meet as a committee, we read through all the nominations and we rank them. Across the board, everyone came back with you guys as the number-one choice, so it was unanimous. So, there's recognition across the state that what you started with that program is a really great innovation and really important. So I wanted to share that with you guys.
And Jennifer, would you like to add any?
I think the only thing that I would, that I reflect upon is the fact that we're pretty unique in Carson City. I think we know that. But to be able to get kids from the high school and out to our sites and back within the class period, that's a one-of-a-kind opportunity. And I think it's really neat that we are able to take advantage of that, and that the enrollment in the class really does represent the overall diversity of our high school. So, that's a pretty fun thing to have as an opportunity.
Just to also kind of give a shout-out to all of the schools that are helping us with this. We took a big group to Eagle Valley today, and I called them a few days ago, and Mr. Conley was, "Come on over," and contacted, you know, 10 teachers and said, "Hey, can I bring the kids in?" "Yep, come on in." So I just really want to give them some credit because they are opening their doors to these students and taking them on as, you know, lead teachers, and we really appreciate that as well.
Well, thank both of you. You've taken us to a new level, and you keep raising the bar. So thank you so very much for that. Any other comments from our board members? Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Philip Brady to come forward and join me at the table. Mr. Brady was recognized at the NASB Conference for his capacity and his expert efforts as an educator and journalist. And the official title is NASB Media Award for Outstanding Education Reporting in a Print Journalism Format. As most of you know, Mr. Brady does a weekly, what exactly do they call it? It's not really an editorial, it's more of a...
More of a column slash information on what's... More of a column, information on what's going on at Carson High School. And just to let Carson City know what Carson High School is doing and how they can participate.
So, what was read at the event about Mr. Brady recognizes him as being a teacher at Carson High School since 2001. His skills in teaching English and journalism provided the perfect skill set for the local newspaper, the Nevada Appeal, to recruit him to write a weekly feature article called Senator Square, named after the commons area at Carson High School. While both CHS and District News can always be found in the Senator Square, the weekly feature focuses on current students, staff, and happenings at Carson High School. Each feature is chock-full of student names, photographs, stories, and activities, plus upcoming events. Individual accomplishments and stellar performances are all reported in a fun and lively way. The Senator Square is a favorite of students, alumni, and community members, and always is the place to learn what's happening at Carson High School. The board's nomination form states that "we are fortunate to have such a dedicated educator serving our students and community." Mr. Philip Brady recognized as print journalism at the NASB Conference.
Well, Phil, thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do. Not only is it for the students and parents, but what you do for the community is something special. You know, I know I look forward to just reviewing what's going on at the high school from a teacher perspective, and I can't thank you enough for doing that. So, without any more board comments here.
Just a comment that the awards committee was very impressed that you're a full-time teacher and still had time to write a weekly newspaper article. And so that they were impressed with that.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I think I told you I had the opportunity to sit by you and your wife on the plane ride home and get to know you a little bit. And I've read your article for the last, what, three years? And I see your face every day, and it was nice to meet you as well. And I believe, a little plug too, you also write for Carson Now as well.
Carson Now and Nevada Appeal are, a lot of people don't realize this, but they're just tandem. And so I send the article, we know that the Nevada Appeal changed their format, and now it's two times a week. So I send it to Nevada Appeal, it comes out on Saturday, and Carson Now, it comes out on Sunday. And I'd just like to say thank you to, you guys are the ones who nominated me for this award, and it's everybody here who nominated me. Because I never saw that coming. All of a sudden, Mr. Stokes walks into my room, and I was like, should I panic? And then Mr. Stokes said, no, I'm, that was human resources back then. Now I'm superintendent. So panic somewhat left. And then told me that I won an award, and I'm very grateful to you for nominating me. And I love what I do at Carson High School. I do not find room for criticizing in any way, shape, or form. Because why would I want to become an educator if I didn't love people and believe in what they're doing? And I love Carson High School, love being there, and I am grateful and honored to even be able to write this article. Which, by the way, I do not get paid for, not one penny, not ever. Just had to point that out.
And it's true, and I'd like to take this opportunity, since you've brought it up, but I would like to thank everybody that helped write the nominations. Because this was the first year that we had the most nominations that we actually put forward as a school board. So, that was Renee, Richard, Dan, Laurel, and me, and whoever else. I think Mike Walker helped too. You had a couple. So, it was a collaborative thing, but it was one of the best turnouts we've had too. So, we had great material to work with, though.
While not able to be here tonight, I also wanted to mention that one of our former employees, Michelle Lewis, recently retired, was recognized as the School Administrator of the Year. And as you know, Mrs. Lewis was synonymous with the program of career and technical education within our school district, and really in the area. And just in the past year, 97.15% of Carson High School's career and technical educations passed the state's workforce readiness exam. That was a direct reflection on the work that Mrs. Lewis has done. And so, I wanted to make sure that Mrs. Lewis was given due credit for also being recognized at the NASB Conference. So, again, all in all, a very fine showing by our folks. I think it speaks well of the caliber of individual who works, volunteers, and contributes to our school district. So, thank you.
Moving right along to Agenda Item Number 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Proposed Changes to CCSD Policy 517: Graduation Requirements. And this is the second reading for Possible Action. And Sue?
Susan Kima, for the record. I don't know why I'm always the one who gets to follow all the great stuff, you know? So, I'll try to make this not so painful.
We made it before ages.
Sure. So, as a result of the last board meeting's discussion, the contents of Policy 517.1 was incorporated into Policy 517. We changed the title to Read High School Graduation Requirements and Graduation Ceremonies. And then you can see in the red on your documents where we incorporated the language regarding 517.1 regarding the ceremonies. So, that's where we're at. Any questions? Otherwise, I seek approval.
Questions, comments?
So, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the revisions as presented and approved November 27, 2018, as a revised date on CCSD Policy 517: High School Graduation Requirements, Graduation Ceremonies.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, Discussion and Possible Action on Possible Elimination of CCSD, it should be just on Elimination of CCSD Policy 517.1: High School Graduation Ceremonies. Second reading. Sue?
Susan Kima, for the record. Because we did provide the language from this policy, 517.1, in Policy 517, I propose, I recommend elimination of this policy.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve November 27, 2018, as the elimination date on CCSD Policy 517.1: High School Graduation Ceremony.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 12, Informational Update on Year-Long Substitute Teachers Serving Students in Carson City School District for the 2018-19 school year. For discussion only, Dr. Jose Delphin.
Thank you, President Swirzik, trustees, Jose Delphin, for the record. You know, as this night has progressed, it's been really fun to hear the kids and our teachers, and of course, the support staff that really supports all of us in this endeavor towards making things great for kids. I took a picture just earlier, and I noticed when I looked at my photograph that one of the kids had a patch 2020 on her Letterman's jacket. And I don't know if you guys caught that, but I felt super old when I saw 2020 on somebody's shoulder. And it's not that far away, but when I was a kid, I thought, oh my, I'm never going to live till 2020, and here we are, we're inches away. And the reason I bring that up is because I thought that, in all our efforts that we do in a school district, that their writing and their presentations have been recorded for posterity. I wish we could YouTube those speeches because they were great. I was especially inspired by all of them. They all had great themes. And I thought, wouldn't it be great if we had a great writing sample Hall of Fame? And you know, we take pictures of kids, and we, Dan Davis puts them up on the website, but it'd be great just to have these writing samples for posterity, so that kids of all ages, as they come after the kids that just won these awards, have writing samples from their own peers to be able to read as our own curriculum. And that that learning keeps going, and that other kids know that, you know, other kids of their age can aspire to that. Just my two senses, I was writing a lot while they were addressing tonight's writing agenda, so I was just really moved. So, thank you for letting me say that. So, from public comment to things we've talked about in the past regarding what I define as year-long subs, are substitute teachers that fill a vacancy all year. And that's different from a long-term substitute that comes in and fills a teacher's position for maybe a week because of surgery, maternity leave, what have you. Life happens, and they're not there really for the entire year. Hence why I invented a word for this case, year-long substitute. So what I tried to do here about seven days ago, as fresh as that information was, and it pretty much still is, I broke down the data by school, by the vacancy of either the grade level or the subject, and also what we did, or what I did, to staff those vacancies. So, I started with Boarderwick, and you can read that for yourself. I tried to make it as easy to follow, and also hopefully just very self-explanatory as far as an update to this agenda item that I think we're going to be doing quarterly. Unfortunately, I don't think this is going to go away. I think that the EDU 110 class is... I think that the EDU 110 class is really the best shot we have to fill the vacancies in our own district. And that pioneering spirit of having kids in our school district either become teachers or parapros, by the way, just got a proposal from Sarah Lobzinger to see if some of our kids could take the para test. I said, what the, why not? And so that, that could be a possibility for kids that want to be parapros. So I'm, I'm very excited about where Carson City is heading. Having teach programs is not a new idea. It's been in process and progress and implemented across districts in this nation. And I believe Carson has the right chemistry ingredients of master teachers, teachers of the year, great support staff in classrooms, great principals and leaders, examples of what school members, school board members should be, district office staff, here in our own experiment for humanity called Carson City School District. And so as much as we can moan and complain about the teacher shortage and having one year-long sub is too much, I believe for the reality of what we're all facing in Nevada, it's not going away very quickly. There is no easy answer. This is probably the most highest rated complaint I get in my office is substitutes. And next to that is what do we do about it? And everybody's got an opinion about pulling all the ISs. And I've even heard of having administrators go teach a class more frequently. Sure, we can, we can do all of that. In fact, I know we've done all of that. Let's imagine that we don't have any ISs. Is that good? Does that make sense? Is that learner-centered? Does it look forward to the future in the way that Carson City has been unique in the 17 school districts in Nevada? Does that make sense for us? I think you're going to get pros and cons on both sides of that coin.
You know, I, I mean, there's a lot of philosophy in this discussion and talking about writing, but if we get into like exactly what's happening in our schools, which is what I'm kind of waiting to hear. So like when you say teacher candidate, so I read the heading here and taking education coursework. So when I got my substitute teaching license when I was a pre-service teacher, that education coursework was psychology 101.
Not anymore.
Well, but what I'm saying is, so just saying they're taking education coursework on paper, that looks like, oh, great, we have all these qualified people. But is that one class? Is it, they're in their senior year? I mean, there's a big difference between, what does that mean? I mean, and this is the type of data that I want a little bit more meat for, not just terms.
Let me bring the meat. So let me break it down for you as far as how I labeled our folks that are taking place of fully certified staff. Because there are. I'm not going to deny it. I'm not the only district either. We have three year-long subs that are simply substitute teachers. They're not taking any education courses like pedagogy, methods, observation, practicum, none of those things. They're substitute teachers. Nothing wrong with that.
When you say substitute, what background, they don't have any educational background? They just have a BS or a BA? Or what exactly qualifies them as a?
A licensed substitute teacher, great question, is someone that holds 60 college credits in any field. And it could be scattered. You could take six psych courses, four soc classes, one math class, eight English classes. You can be general studies. It, it really doesn't matter as long as you have 60 college credits, according to the Nevada Department of Confusion, I mean, Education. So with that, that's all it takes to be a licensed substitute teacher. There is something called an emergency substitute license, which is only good for two years. And that is someone who doesn't have the 60 credits. And I sign off on that paper, and I have a dozen times in the last couple of years to waive the 60 credits. And so that's someone who is highly recommended either by a principal or some trustworthy individual from our community to be able to serve as a substitute teacher. But again, it's only good for two years. And then after that, they can't reapply again to be an emergency sub. It's sunsets. So that's what substitute teachers are by definition. And that means they have no experience as a former educator. They're not retired teachers like our speaker earlier this, this evening. I would consider that person an experienced substitute educator that was at one point fully licensed. And that's a different kind of situation than we have with somebody that has virtually no experience in education or coursework in education. So we have three of those currently, taking three spots in our vacancies. We have four alternative routes to licensure candidates. And these are four people that are either going through, I teach Nevada, Sierra Nevada College, I'm forgetting one more ARL-approved program from the Nevada Department of Education. But there's quite a few, excuse me, that I've worked with in, in the last 10 years. And these are folks that are actually taking these education courses either to be an elementary teacher or special ed teacher. It could be any kind of teacher. But they're typically high needs type of endorsements like special ed, math, science, English. And more recently, it's been expanded to even PE. I've seen more elementary education ARL folks coming out of, especially Sierra Nevada College. Soon to be Dr. Kelly Brown from Sierra Nevada College has been probably my greatest partner in this. And I, and I mean this in a very sincere way, that Sierra Nevada has really been attuned to the Carson City School District path of being learner-centered because they've had actual teachers that have come from our district that have taught those classes, those pedagogy classes, meth, meth, methodology, and other education ease-like frameworks so that anyone who has a bachelor's degree, which is what this ARL means, can then get a master's or another bachelor's degree to be a teacher. And then what happens is as soon as they're hired and go through that same interview process as any teacher candidate would in our district, go through the application process, screen through the paper with my staff, making sure they have all the bells and whistles, and then finally get, secure an interview with the admin and interview panel from each site, then they're offered a job. Once they're offered a job, then the corresponding ARL provider then works with the Nevada Department of Education to get them an ARL license, which is only good for three years. Within that three years, they need to pass all their coursework and while they're serving as an ARL teacher, which is a conditional license, means by condition you have to finish your ARL, whatever that is, and do it within three years so that you get a full standard license. So, and I have to say that again, it's great to be in Carson because no matter if you're a regular sub, and I'm going to get to all these categories in a second, ARL, student teacher, or teacher candidate, I have Carrie Pryor as a secret weapon. I have Sarah Lobzinger. I have a host of master teachers that support these substitutes or ARL or whatever label I put on them every step of the way. I have had administrators go to any length to be able to support whatever the kids need especially, and what that substitute person is, is trying to achieve in our district goals as well. So it's not that we have just set these people who have no experience to people who are experienced in some way loose on our kids, willy-nilly. That has never happened in our district. We're not San Diego where they just hired bus drivers or anyone off the street for goodness sakes, seven years ago, and slapped a provisional license on them and they were teaching class. That was a horrible social experiment. So we have four ARL candidates. We have three student teachers. What's wrong with being a student teacher and actually student teaching, which is what I did, what Mrs. Kima did, Mr. Walker, Mr. Stokes, we all student taught for at least a semester or half a semester to be able to practice our craft of becoming a teacher. Joe's kids, they're going to go through student teaching. They're not out there alone.
I think that the question isn't, nobody's saying there's something wrong with substitute teachers. And we know we have to fill these spots with licensed individuals. And so I think that the question is, it's an unprepared teacher in lieu of a qualified or highly qualified teacher and then?
I beg to defer about qualification because I think?
Well, I'm not, I haven't finished my point yet, Mr. Dalton. So when you think about this, so we're looking at the education of children, we're spending a lot of time talking to all these schools about how they're moving the needle for our students. And they're going to do that on the backs of their teachers, obviously. And so I think the question becomes, this is a small school district. And if every elementary school has two instructional strategists or coaches, whatever they're called, and then interventionists, you know, if I, I'm looking at most of this list and most of these schools have two each. And so even if you said each of these schools gets one coach, and I think that would still be a lot for a district this size. But maybe, you know, with Read by Grade Three, they probably do need a coach. But I think we have a huge number of coaches. And when we have 17 vacancies, that 17-class schools of kids that aren't having the teacher that they deserve. And that's our job to make sure that they're getting what they have. So I mean, if we didn't have a big team of instructional coaches that are planning curriculum or whatever, which is the job of the teacher, and they were in the classroom meeting the needs of students, I think that's one thing. But we have a pool of people that we can reassign for the students, and I think that's what we need to start looking at.
How many instructional coaches, strategists, implementation specialists do we have? We've got 17 teacher vacancies. How many of those do we have? Is it two at every site or is it more? And I know some are grant position, required positions, but what's our estimate on that number?
We have, Susan Kima for the record, we have two at each of the elementaries, one for science, technology, and math, and then one for reading for Read by Three because it's required by law. The one that's assigned for STEM, that's attached to a grant. So something we can do as we watch the legislative session and see where's the funding? Maybe the funding isn't coming back for something like that again, maybe it will. Maybe it's going to be better off used for things and not people. So we'll have to make those decisions as we see what's happening with retirements and legislative requirements because law requires a learning strategist for each of the elementary sites for Read by Three. As far as the high school, you saw the six through 12 folks here. We also have like Leann Morris, Dr. Morris, who leads technology for the district, Peggy, Peggy Sweetland, who is our McKinney Vento person. She's considered a TOSA. So we have those folks that are district-wide. And then some that are also grant would be Joanna Kaiser for Gate and Tanya Carone for ESL. And two administrative interns that we have that are teachers out of the classroom that are two administrative interns.
And, and I'm not sure, but I just wanted to kind of maybe have an idea when, I think that's a discussion to have down the way. But I guess my other question I have is, so there's 17 teacher vacancies, three life, or three year-long substitutes, four additional or alternative routes to license, or three student teachers and seven teacher candidates. What are we doing as a district to help these teacher candidates and the ARL candidates complete the, the last few, maybe it's just a few, maybe it's more, maybe it takes the full years. But if they're close, what are we doing as a district to support them so that they can become fully licensed and certified teachers within a year or so?
Lovely question. We, lovely question. We're, we're doing everything we can. As I stated earlier, we have other ISs coaching them because they're able to do that. And I think that's maybe a possible answer for what the ultimate question will be, how many ISs do we actually need? And I don't know that number. But to me, our master teachers who are either in the classroom or out of the classroom help support all of these folks. Just about all of them, I, I don't want to say 100%, but at least 90 to 95% have gone through new teacher hire. Even our student teachers, our ARL folks. Even some of our subs have gone through new hire training. Because Carrie has had that passion saying, hey, if they're going to be here all year, I'm going to treat them like a new hire. And she has, and she's done a fantastic job getting them trained up, if you will, or giving them as many tools as possible. So?
She's also done that parent engagement part that goes to their license too. What she's done in-house, which they haven't had to go outside the district to do too, which I think is really important because that is one of the things that the district is actually doing to help these people get their, their credit, so.
And please, please don't mistake my passion for being argumentative. I, I really am passionate. I, I know that there is a crisis and it's not just in Carson City, but we're not alone. It's not unique to us. I, I am passionate about this because I do want the best for each kid. Nobody in here wants to have a non-licensed teacher, ideally for each student. Nobody does. But if, if what we have is what we have, then what, what do we do to make lemonade? Right? And that's what we're doing.
Okay, before we go any further, no, I, I think the, the agenda topic is, is a report on substitute teachers. And Mike, you know, your, your questions are, are worth taking about ISs. It's another topic. It's a topic of a learner-centered model and how it moves kids forward and what it takes. And what do ISs do to contribute to our student success? That's a different topic. And I, I think that if you want to talk about that, we should put that on the agenda and talk about it. Because there's, we've got to think globally now instead of lineary, in a linear fashion. So.
That does kind of timeout. Okay, here we go. So now I feel your pain, Mr. Swirzik. You have it on and it times itself out. So three student teachers. I can tell you from comments from either the student teacher or the administrators and/or mentor teachers, our student teachers are rocking it in the classroom. They're doing a lot of heavy lifting. They're taking care of kids. They're fielding parent complaints. They're doing all the things that any natural teacher would be doing. And a lot of them are, are outpacing, some are, are veteran teachers, to be honest with you, because they're just sponges. They're, they're, they've been immersed. The only thing they know is the learner-centered model. And so that data is really part of this conversation as well, is that if you're getting training from Carrie, who's learner-centered, no matter what you are as a label, you're, you're being imprinted with the Carson brand. And it's a good brand. And then we have seven teacher candidates. And these are folks who are actually not ready for going into ARL, not ready to, to fully commit yet because of issues like family, their own personal things that are happening in their lives. But they've at least taking, taken the, the minimal amount of classes, which is six to 12 classes of, like I said before, pedagogy, methodology, teaching strategies, classroom management, all the things that are basic to becoming a teacher, if you will, one-on-one. And, and hopefully getting enough under their, their belt to move forward with assistance. Obviously, all these folks, even our new hires, folks, new hires that are coming from out of state or from college, are getting of state or from college, are getting the same royal treatment that these folks are getting. There is no seeing them as worse or, or better. They're, they're all getting the Carson treatment, which is, we take care of our people, and we have. As long as I've been here for ten years, even though I'm the HR guy and wear that badge, we're, we're here to take care of each other, and we have. So, and a lot of these folks have really turned the corner. I can say in ten years, if they've turned the corner to become a teacher, they're committed. And some that have gone through regular education routes from UNR or whatever university have also left. They've not turned the corner. So it just depends on each person's situation. So the data that I'm bringing forth to you is what it is. Nothing up my sleeve. We have three year-long substitutes with a lot of support from the district, as with all our ARL candidates, student teachers, and our teacher candidates. Would I like that number to be zero? Absolutely. Would I like everyone to be highly qualified licensed teachers? Absolutely. No question. But what do we have? What's the reality? Well, we're making lemonade. And we are deciding as a team, how many instructional coaches that are not in the classroom, as we look at budget, Mr. Feeling, just got here in time from Vegas, to be discussing that, that part of it, you know, because we are facing some budgetary constraints. And for all intents and purposes, I was the first one to raise that flag about, hey, what about all these coaches? So I hear you.
So Jose, you know, I, without going over, I mean, we all know where we're at, we all know what we need. And, you know, my thought is, sticking to the agenda topic here, this, you know, when we have the student teachers in the classrooms and whatnot, I can only speak for myself, I think everybody's doing the best they can do. I think, you know, our, the, the, the coaches or whatever we're calling them that are assigned to, you know, the Carrie Pryers and whatnot, I have nothing but high regards for her. You know, my concern is, though, these people can't be in the classroom, excuse me, in the classroom every day with these young aspiring teachers. When you're a student teacher, I mean, I think that's, I didn't go down that route, but when my wife went through student teaching, she had a master teacher in the classroom with her, so they could critique the lessons, say, how to, you know, what could I have done better? You know, do, you have someone to fall back on. We're struggling with that, and without getting into the topic of should or shouldn't coaches be in the classroom, I think that's where, where I'm leaning towards, and I'd like to have that on the agenda, but when I think learner-centered model, there's nothing more important than having a qualified educator in the classroom. So I mean, that's where I think we need to go. And with these, with these year-long, I appreciate this list, and with the year-long subs we have, it's important to give them the training we need, given what we're doing. But I think we got to look at how we can do more for them, because I know we have more than just year-long subs. We have long-term subs, you know, and, and we're not talking about that tonight, but we have a lot of subs in the classroom for more than just covering an illness and things like that. They're just, we have a lot in there.
Mrs. Freeman brought up a part where having some retired teachers come in, are there barriers because of PERS that we don't look at there, or?
So I have come before you in, in getting those critical need positions passed, and we've done them in the past, and we'll continue to do that. There really aren't any barriers, as long as they're on the list of critical need, and we've approved them, and we've got them through the PERS hurdles, we can hire back, and they double-dip, basically. Yep.
So looking at this list, how many of these are critical needs?
Let me see. Well, I mean, to me, they're all critical, because they all have kids. I mean, bottom line, but as far as-
I know, I know, that's all of our definition, but-
But as far as critical-
PERS would qualify where?
Right. English would be the only one that fits the critical need PERS definition.
We don't have the designation for our elementary teachers?
We do not. We can.
I think that'd probably be a good idea.
Okay, additional questions, comments from the board?
I think, you know, one of the things, Mr. Stokes, I think would be helpful when we have these reports is, instead of anecdotal data, like, let's get some real data. So if we're hearing that these people are outperforming, let's see some results. You know what I mean? How many of those teachers in the past have gone on and gotten their full license and are in a classroom teaching type deal? Instead of just hearing these stories of there's a lot of this or that, let's see the numbers. And that kind of would put my mind and probably a lot of people's minds at ease, and know that we're on the right track, if that makes sense.
But I think you have to qualify how many years you want to go back, because you don't want staff going back ten years or whatever.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, reports from here on out-
Oh, okay.
Have actual data as opposed to just stories.
And I guess, I guess the question I was asking, how can we support these teacher candidates, these ARL candidates? What specifically, other than everything that we can, what are we doing to help them? Are we off, are, are there classes that they need that maybe we can offer in-house? Is there an incentive that we, I mean, they're employed, but is there an incentive that we can give them to have them complete their certification? Because hopefully, you know, the, the three years for the ARL, how many of those are, are completing it? And, and what can we do to, to help them make sure that they, they progress through that? Because we, and, and our student teachers, too. I know, I know that we have hired some of them directly after that, but we don't want to train them and then lose them. So what are, what are we putting in place to make sure we can bring them back and, and have them, I don't want them to stay, get too comfortable in the, I'm working on it, but I'm not finished yet. You know, like, let's, let's get it, the rest of whatever they need done.
So if, if, if I can, then let me, let me expand on that. Each, except for teacher candidates and year-long substitutes, ARL student teachers all have mentors outside the district as well. So part of that program is somebody from that college or institution has to come in and do evaluations on them during their tenure as non-fully licensed teachers yet. So there are actual experts in the field from UNR or Sierra Nevada College, or I Teach Nevada. And they come in and do exactly what mentor teachers do, as Mr. Cassioppo stated earlier. And that's to observe these candidates, do their thing, and that's teaching, working with parapros, working with community and staff, and, and students as well, of course, and looking at them at a 360 dimension, and being able to give them coaching and feedback along the way. That is written down. It is a formalized process, and they get a lot of support through the data that's collected by these expert teachers in the field, that, that's all they do, pretty much, is observe, coach, and evaluate, and support their own students. It's, it's up to, it's really beneficial to those institutions to do that, because it provides integrity to their programming, and also fidelity to our district, because they're learning our process. They're not learning Washos, or Douglas's, or Lyon County's, they're learning Carson City's way. So they, they're also observing them assimilate to what we do in our culture of Carson City. And that's a great process. They also get feedback, these experts from out of our district, with their own mentors inside that school. So they're, they're taking measurements, if you will, or pulses of their performance from other ISs as well. And it is both a qualitative and quantitative process, as anyone who's gone through student teaching and/or observation, or under the microscope as a teacher or administrator. So, and, and they are, they are baptized in that fashion, just like any other aspiring teacher. So I'm grateful for that, that there's a formal, formal approved process by the NDE, Mrs. Crossman, that has been tried and true for years, from the time, you know, the dinosaurs roamed, with Madeleine Hunter, talking about objectives, to now we're talking about learning targets. So, and that's what I mean about everything we can. And, and all the same traditional foundations that typical student teachers and teacher candidates would, would receive. And we do offer TESL, we do offer Gate, we do offer math, and anyone that can take advantage of those PDC-type offerings that give them college credit and meaningful PD, because it's grown by our own people, and overseen by our administrators, they, they get the whole package.
Say none. Okay, Jose, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, agenda item thirteen, that's informational update on fiscal year 2018-19 budget in preparation for the final amended budget to be presented December 11th, 2018, for discussion only. AJ?
Thanks for having me back. AJ Feeling for the record, I apologize for being late this evening. I was attending a bit of an oxymoron, probably one of the larger oxymorons I've ever experienced in my life. It was an exciting school finance meeting in, in Las Vegas. But it was, and I, I'll probably interject a little bit as we go through this, because I think it will offer a little context and kind of frame the discussion, just kind of in the bigger picture of not only now, but kind of looking at next year, and I think that's important within all of this. The, the meeting itself was actually about the study that was commissioned by the legislature to look at, basically, creating a, a new way to fund education in Nevada, replacing the Nevada plan that, that came to the state in 1967. It was, I, attended by many of the superintendents, a lot of the finance folks, a lot of folks from NDE, LCB, and it was really just good. I think there was a lot of interest and excitement in the room, but also fear and uncertainty, because it's a, it's a pretty, pretty big lift to do that. So the district in December of each year is allowed to amend its budget. Historically, this has always been related to student count. So of course, you're approving a, a final budget in May, well, well ahead of the, the school year beginning. And the primary determinant of your, your revenues is how many kiddos do you actually have? And so historically, you had count day in September, and then by the end of December, at some point, you were allowed to do an amended budget to reflect changes in your enrollment, and then also add in changes that come from your audit. And really, the audit from the prior year, really the changes there are just your actual fund balances that you have within, within your different funds. So we are preparing that for the December, oh, sorry, for the December 11th meeting. Some, some highlights and, well, just to, to kind of in a broader sense, review what's, what we see. There's not much change to the revenue picture, so the projection for students for the current school year actually is very close to where we are right now, so I don't plan on adjusting that at all. The, one of the more interesting things, and I included in your packet, a, what we call a scattergram, that shows you how, for, for new teacher hires this year, how they were placed in the salary schedule. And so one of the, I, I don't know if it's kind of an outlier for this year, or if this will become a trend. But whereas last school year, there were eleven teachers that had more than four years of experience, and kind of reflecting where they were placed on the salary schedule, this year there were twenty-nine. So it's a pretty significant increase. And what is great about that is obviously, you know, we're having this discussion about having teachers, and, and so hiring these folks is great. But because they do have some more experience, it offsets some of the savings that we would have expected through attrition, retirements, and those sorts of things. So that's something that I, I certainly wasn't expecting when initially budgeting this last year, but will be reflected when we do the amended budget. We do have some new hires that have been brought on since the year started due to needs, or are being considered for higher to, for potential need. Actually, oh, well, I'll, I'll get to the detail of that in just a second. There's a couple new costs to consider. And then also kind of in the, the larger picture, too, as you, as you consider this, our audit will be brought to you for, for consideration and approval at the December meeting. I would consider these numbers unaudited, because we don't have final numbers yet, but it, it looks like last year, the, we ended the year with about a fifty, fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar deficit. So our, our current fund balance, even after that, will still be over sixteen million dollars at that point, so. As I mentioned, on the, the revenue side, as far as average daily enrollment, that remains unchanged. I believe we'll come in really close to that original projected number. Some other smaller revenues increasing, just based on what we're seeing in trends the last couple of years, now that we do have close to finished numbers from last year. Some changes were made to add one hundred and thirty-five thousand in additional revenue. Additional expenditures, so within the general fund. And one, I, I do apologize on the, on the handout, I forgot to include one of these. But so there's consideration for one custodian, working with Mark Kornick on that one right now. And it's related to increased square footage at Pioneer, and, and really soon to be increased square footage at, at Fremont and Mark Twain, and trying to figure out what's, what are the needs going to be to take care of those pieces of facility. The work-based learning coordinator position, so the, the grant that covers that position ended up not covering the full cost of it, so that point thirty-two, point three-two or thirty-two percent falls into the, the general fund. There is a additional bus driver position that was requested due to the number of routes and increased routes. And then one kinder parrot, so that came about right at the beginning of the school year at Boarder Wick Bray. So all the, in the previous year, I think there were four kindergarten classes at every school, and Boarder Wick Bray ended up with five this year, and so we have a kinder parrot in each kindergarten classroom, so that was a unnecessary hire for that. The, the fund of, of more concern to me is within special education. So we have, and I, I should say as well, I'm going to be sitting down with Jan Albertson to review this, to make sure that I have these increases correct, and that there's no duplication, but that there are four additional teachers that were hired, or that are at least posted for positions this year, four paraprofessional fours, and seven one-to-one paras. Now, the, the teachers and, and regular paras generally are determined by the, the- are determined by the caseloads in the classrooms. And my question was, are we up in kids this year? Is that ultimately why we had to hire more? And it turns out that if the numbers I have are correct, that we are actually not up in kids, but the type of kids and the severity of kids has changed and quite a bit dramatically this year. The one-to-one paras, that's something that's determined during the IAP process. And so, in some cases, these apparently are kids that for a number of years, the district through other means has tried, you know, trying to, I guess, give them the best opportunities. But that in the end, it was determined that that situation was something that they needed. So, it's a rather expensive addition to the budget. But again, this whole budget is still being fine-tuned in preparation for the December 11th meeting. So, it's potentially, potentially some of these things could change. I don't believe they would change for the worse, depending on anything, they would change for the better.
And really, AJ, those are team decisions by the IEP team. So, even whatever you forecasted, you have no idea because you're not on those teams and neither are we. So, I mean, it's kind of a case-by-case situation.
Right, right. And it's, yeah, and ultimately, special education, you know, because of the way the laws are written, federal laws are written, you really, and I should say too, you have your state kind of mandatory caseload ratios. You don't have a lot of control over these things. But again, I just want to make sure, I was talking with Jan quite a bit today. So, we're going to have kind of a final meeting just to review all this. It's, the special education staff in the district are now, over 200, 200 of our district staff are within special education. And we have about 1,000 staff in the district. And that's all in, all funds, everybody, nutrition, everything. So, really just 20% of your staff is special education. It's pretty, pretty significant. So, it's a lot of folks to sort through.
AJ, was there a discussion at your meeting about that? Because I know all of the districts are struggling with the special ed funding.
Yeah, so, as I think we've kind of discussed with this before, they're looking at implementing these weights. And now, Augenblick, which is the company the legislature hired to do this study, has come back with their proposal. And here's, you know, here's what the weights are based on. They, they do, I believe it's four different kind of model evaluations of what, what they think, how schools basically should be staffed based upon their populations. And then what are the costs then, kind of working backwards from there? What is the cost of doing that? And that's really a key difference in what is happening is the old model, we're one of only two states in the country that have a funding model based on prior year expenditures. So, if you are, when, if you're a low-spending district, you almost, you almost really don't ever have the option to be, to increase your spending a whole lot because your new funding is always, there was looking back, it's a function of what you spent in the last year. So, it becomes hard if things change and you want to spend more for whatever reason, you really, it's difficult. This new model is what they call cost-based. So, they're, they're looking at what, what does it cost to provide an adequate education? And adequate is defined as what it would take to meet all of your federal mandates, which special education obviously is a large one, all of your state mandates, and then otherwise operate how you need to operate the district. And so, that, you've probably heard the number come back that it's, for statewide, it's an additional $4,000 per pupil. Statewide average is only $6,000 per pupil. So, it's a really significant increase. And so, what was interesting is, so they came up with some rough numbers. And there were a lot of questions and there's still work to be done. But kind of these initial rough numbers, you're looking at the example, if, if fully funded, and you have to understand that because of some changes, Clark and Washoe do have, absorbing quite a bit more money than they had in the past. So, as much as it's 4,000 at the overall in the state, the difference in this initial calculation worked out to about an additional $1,000 per student for us. So, while that's not 4,000, that's still an additional $8 million, $7 million almost, right, for our district. And we could certainly do a lot of good with that kind of money. On the flip side of that, we had a meeting at NDE, still related to the old model. And it's hard because there's these two models now. We don't really know, you know, we won't know until July which one we're going to use when the legislature is done. Trying to budget this is going to be a lot of fun. But within that one, we're looking at potentially like a four to $5 million loss in revenue. So, you have 10% to the downside and 15% to the upside. And so, somewhere in there, I'm going to have to come to you and we're going to have to talk about this probably quite a bit. Where do you want to kind of draw the line in the sand that here's what we're going to budget for? So, it'll be an interesting conversation that we'll have. A couple other, so not related to staffing, a couple additional costs. So, the property liability insurance that we have with Pool Pact, when that came to you in June, that was above what was initially budgeted. So, asking to put that amount added in. Special education contractor costs, so again, back to special education. This, as I understand from Jan, is really related to specific, I mean, it's really it's services that our folks don't or can't provide. So, a lot of it is related to psychological services. And I don't understand all the intricacies of it, but there's a difference between what your school psychologist can do and then there's therapy and other things on the outside that our psychologists cannot do. But because of the incidence of violent behavior we have, we have had some concerns, sad concerns with kind of family situations. These types of folks have had to, been brought in. So, again, that will be fully tightened up by the time we come back in a couple of weeks. The last thing is a really strange, unique situation. So, last December, you approved to purchase two new buses for the district. Literally, the day after you approved that, that purchase order went into the company with expected delivery by April. The buses were not ready until August, which is past the fiscal year. And it's really too far past the end of the fiscal year to try to make a case that, you know, you can maybe bring that back to the prior. So, no buses were purchased in the last fiscal year, which was a savings of like $270,000 to the general fund. Each year, in general, we just budget for one bus. The, transportation has used their bus funding for this year to purchase one of those buses. And that company is sitting there with that other bus. And they well know that it's possible that we may not purchase it. And that's on them because they guaranteed delivery much earlier. So, I don't know that transportation is going to fall apart if they don't get this bus. But it, I mean, in the context of what was anticipated, they would have received two new buses last year. They have one right now. And so, if you would be interested in adding that in. Now, all of that in the context of where I see this ending up at this point. And again, there's still fine tuning to happen. So, on the left, you have the budget that was approved back in May. Bless you. And the budget that was approved was a little over $2.1 million deficit. What I would like to point out, because you'll see that this number has increased quite a bit to 2.7, but it is almost entirely because of the transfers. And that is almost entirely because of, that it is entirely because of special education costs. That, that large transfer, I initially budgeted at 7, 7.15 million. And now it's at about 7.8 million. So, it's a pretty significant increase from where we had, had anticipated it. So, and two, I want to put some context to that. So, when you look at the budgets that have been approved by other districts around us, and it may seem strange, you know, we always seem to be in this kind of situation of these deficits when we're looking at budgets. The budget that Churchill County School District approved had a deficit of about 1.9 million. The deficit that Lyon County approved was right around 2 million. Douglas approved a budget worth a $2.2 million deficit. Washoe had to make significant cuts to get down to 7.5. Clark made enormous cuts to get down to $15 million deficit. So, this is not out of the norm. My predecessor's predecessor, who, whose ghost still haunts the halls of the district office, Bob Anderson, the budgets that, that he brought forth, we still have all the budgets going back to the late 90s, generally were in the same situation. It was anywhere from like a 1.5 to a $4 million deficit. So, it's, I think it's a reflection of some conservatism with the revenues and really on the expenditure side, making sure, because especially on the expenditure side, it's important because I can't leave you short. Otherwise, the state comes in and they're not happy and that sort of thing. So, I, I don't believe this will be the final number. There's still, like I said, some fine tuning to do. That contingency is not a part of that. So, remember, there was a million in contingency. And we did use 300,000 of that. And then carryforward amounts, again, will be added in at the end. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I apologize to you, I forgot one other position that we did add this year, when it was in nutrition for Empire Elementary School. But I don't, I think we'll be able to not impact the transfer that goes to the, or from the general fund. Still make that one work, so.
Questions, comments from the board?
Just clarification. In the update, you say that we're $50,000 deficit, but then you show this slide and we're 500,000.
Sure, sorry. So, the, this is a good question. The 50,000 is, is last fiscal year. So, at the, it seems, looking at kind of the final numbers, not everything's shaking out that last year, we ended up with about 50,000 more in expenses than we did in revenues. So, but our, our fund balance was about 16.2 million. So, it's really, it's a slight reduction from that 16.2. So, we're still sitting, that would still be sitting right at about a 24% fund balance, 25% fund balance.
So, you're saying the 50,000 is from last fiscal year and the 500,000 is this next fiscal year?
Yes.
Current, yeah.
Yeah, correct, so, yes, yes, yes. And that's the, so this December, and I know this is always kind of strange. So, we're approving this December amended budget, but it's for this year. I mean, we're already halfway through the year, but we're approving a budget still for this year. So, it's kind of strange, but that's how it is.
And then just a question that it was 2.6 million on that last slide. Does that include the contingency, the 1 million contingency, which we dipped into a little bit?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not include that, yeah.
And what about the Read by Three stuff? Is that all panned out to where we talked about we might have to amend the budget because of it?
Sure. So, what you will see in the amended budget is, in the final budget that was approved in May, there was a $1 million line for contingency. When you see this December amended budget, you're still going to see that line at $1 million. On, on the kind of application side of your approval to use those funds, on our, on our books, that shows up. But really, in the greater scheme of things, you're still just approving that 1 million in contingency. It's just that you did approve this year to actually use some of it. But that won't change how it shows up in the budget at all.
Okay, AJ, what you just presented are budgeted numbers. How much would the audited, the actual, will this change? Because you're showing, you're retaining budgeted numbers from the beginning.
Sure.
And adding to this. But you will have a budgeted ending fund balance, which becomes, there's an actual beginning fund balance.
Sure, sure. So, so the beginning fund balance then would be, it'll be right around 16.2, or a little under 16.2 million. So, with this, it would bring you down, let's say to, sorry, I think it would, it would end up being, which is, I, I think, I looked at that. I believe that is still 18%. I mean, again, and that's assuming that you get exactly that revenue amount and you spend exactly that amount of money, which will not be the case. You know, it won't happen. I'll say that last year, the budgeted revenues, I don't, I'm not saying this will happen again, but budgeted revenues, with all the projections we're given from taxation, having a pretty good idea of that enrollment number, our budgeted revenue still came in 800,000 over what was budgeted. And so, especially with the improving economy, that's really, it's making a pretty big difference in how some of those numbers are coming in. But we still use taxation's numbers, sure.
So, I'm getting this actual, we'll get actual numbers. We may not be as bad off as what was presented.
Correct, that's correct.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Trustee Wilkie had asked about any updates or new information with regard to the Read by Grade Three grant. We had, back when we were making those decisions, it had been suggested that we apply for reverted monies. None of that has come through. So, we are still sitting in this place of wait, hoping that something might occur. But so far, it doesn't look like that's going to occur. So, I just wanted to follow up to give you some added detail.
Do you think that we would revisit that if the new governor appoints somebody else to head the department?
It's hard to say. I would love to say yes, but with, with this study that is being reviewed, with the potential, like we heard from Fund Our Future, those folks, the grassroots effort, I think there's a lot of possibilities for K-12 to receive some additional consideration. Whether or not it actually happens, that's, that's an unknown. But it, it looks like to me that the funding that we were encouraged to apply for back in August, that has dropped off everybody's radar.
And do we still have our legal options available to us on that Read by Three grant with the Department of Ed?
Mr. Pavlakis, turn to you for some advice.
Additional questions, comments? We'll see you next month. Agenda item number 14, discussion of possible action on the superintendent's annual evaluation for the 2018 calendar year. This is for possible action. And I'll start by saying, in our packets, we have each individual trustee's evaluation of the, the tool we use for evaluation, the overall score, when everything is added, it came out to a very satisfactory performance of the, of the superintendent. And, but at this time, I think what we'll do is go through this evaluation. If anybody else has any additional comments in each of the sections, then we can, we can discuss that.
I just have a question first. Seeing that one of our trustees did not complete the evaluation, is that somehow, I didn't look through Mr. Stokes' contract again, but is that required by his contract that all the trustees or is just the evaluation by a quorum?
Just that there be an evaluation. There's not a requirement that each trustee participate.
Okay, with this, let's just start with... Okay, with this, let's just start with the leadership and district culture. We can get on page two, and we've got the scores, but are there any additional comments that the board would like to make, or individual trustees? And Richard, any comments from you?
I think there's only one that I would have, and that is, given where we are with our strategic plan, if there, if there would be a desire to do something else from a planning perspective with the superintendent and the board, I would appreciate any direction there that you might have for me.
Going on to page three, and that's the employer superintendent relations, which is, came out with an overall rating of superior. Any additional comments by the board? Page four, community relations and communications, the overall score is very satisfactory. Any additional comments from the board, or?
I just want to say, you know, and I said this to Mr. Stokes privately, that, you know, I enjoy working with him. He does a good job as superintendent of this district, and my one suggestion is that in light of our teacher shortage, and regardless of, we don't see them here, but I hear from a large number of dissatisfied people in the district. And generally, there is a lot of support and trust for Mr. Stokes amongst our staff. And so what I've encouraged him to do is, and I know that, you know, Mrs. Keem is looking at some listening tours, I know you and Joe had attended one at a school, and I just think that making yourself available to sit down with the teachers and the staff members, and maybe even some of the administrators, and really hearing those concerns and letting them know that you're in there fighting for them, I think is going to be huge. And I think that that's going to turn around a lot of this. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, I didn't just write this down, I personally had said this to you, and, and I say that out of respect, because I know that you can help turn that around.
Okay, page five, organizational management, and we get an overall rating of superior. Any additional comments by the board? Page six, educational program slash curriculum planning development, overall score a very satisfactory. And again, comments from the board, or Mr. Stokes? Okay, page seven, instructional leadership, overall score, very satisfactory. Any additional comments? Seeing none. Page eight, human resources management, staff and personnel relations, overall rating of very satisfactory. Any additional comments from the board? Mr. Stokes, any from you? Going on to page nine, values and ethics leadership, overall rating of superior. I don't think there's anything else that probably needs to be said either way. Going on to page 10, financial management and business matters, an overall rating of superior. Just comments from the board, or Mr. Stokes? Page 11, management and implementation of strategic plan, overall rating of very satisfactory. And again, any comments from the board, Mr. Stokes? Page 12, student achievement, overall rating of very satisfactory. Any additional comments from the board? Mr. Stokes?
Mr. President, I'd just like to add, with regard to academic achievement, I know the whole concept is a little bit of a moving target. It's tough to, I think, just looking at our workshop tonight with the work that's being done at Carson High School, to, to change a curriculum, no matter how small, it's a pretty big job. And it'll take, it'll take us a bit, but I think we're headed in the right direction. I expect that a lot of the things that are in place now will bear fruit and we'll see I know that even, even as we talk about the right recipe for staffing in our school district, and trying to juggle things like the strategic plan with test scores and with implementing new curriculum based on new standards, we're in a tremendously heavy business as it applies to needing human capital. So while we may have a lot of excellent teachers and staff members, maybe not in the classroom this year, and possibly last year, those people are doing a job that someone would have to do. Adding that additional task to our current teaching staff would also be a burden. So I know it's kind of a philosophical piece, and I don't know if there's a right answer. We're certainly trying to be agile to adapt to the needs of the school district. And I guess I just say all that to let you know that this is, we do rely on our people, and we do rely on the various talents of our people to help us in these different ways. So that was, that was all I wanted to say.
You know, Mr. Stokes, and when I think about that, I think that, more, especially we're talking about a strategic plan, I think that we have to look at what is our priority. And obviously, our first priority has to be the students. You know what I mean? That's, that's why we're a board, to make sure that the children in this community get a quality education, and that we're using taxpayer funds efficiently and effectively. And so I think that, I think that that's, that kind of has to be our guiding force with that. And I, and I, the other part of it is, you know, when we get these reports on student achievement, you know, one of the things that our teachers complain to me about all the time is how much time it takes to put it in Mastery Connect, and then there's something for this, and then they have to put it in this, and, you know what I mean? And it sounds to me this huge headache, and I'm told all the time it takes. But then when we get these reports, they're really hard to understand, and we don't see data from all those sources. And so if our staff members are spending, you know, what they're reporting, hours of time on their own, importing data and whatnot, it seems to me that when we have kind of those reporting sessions, we should have some real quality data that we could kind of compare S-Back to, you know, end of quarter exams, or MAP data type deals. And that's why I was suggesting that. I think that it would just, it would help us as a board support the district's efforts, because right now, I think what we get is, we all kind of walk around scratching our heads and try to figure out exactly what it is. And I think that there's a way that we could use the systems that the district has in place to get a better understanding of achievement.
Additional comments overall for the board? Joe?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, first of all, you know, I think Richard's, it's a difficult job, and I appreciate everything you're doing. I know on some of the categories, you know, my scores were a little lower than others. But I just want to make it clear that I think, generally speaking, I think Richard is a, truly a top-notch superintendent. Like I said in my overall comments, very involved in the community, seeks community support, highly ethical person. I think our financial leadership is tremendous, given the bag of eggs we have. You know, I mean, we're really doing a good job there, and so, so many factors are moving in the right direction. We have opportunities for students. I just, you know, to piggyback on what Mike said, we just, we get a tremendous amount of, of emails and correspondence about the amount of work, the low morale, and that combined with, when we look at the testing portion of it, the, the test scores, that's the struggle I'm having, is we're, you know, I think we're doing good things, and I think if we stay on course, we're going to get there, but we're, we're really struggling to get there now. And when I say it's our, probably shouldn't lean back too far, when I say we're, you know, we're doing well, we're really struggling to stay at the state average. And I think that's what really is concerning me the most, is we really have to look at what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what we can do to make these more immediate improvements. But generally speaking, I mean, we've said it time and time again, test scores aren't everything, we know that, but they are the measure that people hold us to, and we have to recognize that, because I know if we were killing it on S-Back and ACT and everything, we'd be celebrating that, as we should. So, you know, the fact that we're not doing as well on those things, I think we, you know, in certain areas, we should pat ourselves on the back, but we have to recognize that and own the fact that, you know, there's areas that need to be improved.
You know, and can I just add on to that? You know, and even when there's topics that we might not agree, you know, I feel very comfortable coming and talking, and having a very honest, open conversation, and I walk away feeling as if we heard each other and came to some sort of an understanding. And so I appreciate that about you. I enjoy working with you, and I trust you as a superintendent.
And just on the student achievement, I think there's different views, because there's the test scores, but I'm looking at our graduation rates that are continuing to grow, increase. Pioneer High School's turnaround in their graduation rates, enormous gains. I'm celebrating the tremendous success of the AP test scores that are well above the state average, well above the national and international average is for pass rates on the AP exams. So I look at, I'm trying to take a more holistic approach to how the kids are achieving, and I think there's tremendous amount of student achievement and a tremendous amount of opportunities for them to achieve. Some of it has just been started, but this Jump Start program is continuing to grow. We're continuing to grow. We've got elementary schools with very high English learner populations, whose kids are all meeting their targets. And so I look at that and say, you know, we're, we don't have those test scores yet, but there's a lot of really good achievement going on with kids, and some of the kids that, that come to us needing the most help to get where they need to go. So I'm, I'm celebrating that with the achievement. Overall, I do think you're doing a great job as superintendent. I think you're always focused on trying to have the kids do the best that they can. I think there's a lot of effort in the well-being of the students in all aspects of their lives, not, not only the achievement academically, but their achievement socially, their achievement as individuals, and there's a lot of concern for all of our students. So I really appreciate that.
Just for time considerations, ditto.
I do, I have some comments. And I'm going to start by saying, as far as, you know, the superintendent and the Carson City School District, that we're fortunate to have Richard, and I, and I believe he's exceptional, and I want to give some reasons why. Our job as board members are to create conditions for achievement for students by engaging the community, and this comes from the National School Board Association. But more so, student achievement and success in life for all students. I think we're heading in that direction because of the superintendent. And I want to relate to the NASB meeting, that one saying that was flashed upon us for three days. Do what is right, not what is easy. And Richard has done, in my opinion, he has done what is right for the students and not what is easy. Easy could be, there's a lot of people, you know, complaining or whatever, and he could forget the students, but he's doing what is right, and I want to illustrate that. Starting with the, by what our job is, student achievement and engaging the community. The community engagement with a strategic plan, which focuses on all students, and let me give you a little statement that was taken from something that was given to us on the Learner Center Model. It says, "In 2012, the community clamored for improvements to the educational opportunities for all students. The process initiated by us, the school board, reached out to the community and asked a wide cross-section of stakeholders to actively support the district in developing a strategic plan that would support sweeping changes across the district." And this was for all students. Let me, you know, go forward, and I'm going to talk about the community engagement, the strategic plan, the Learner Center approach to learning, facilities, wellness, and give some highlights. Starting with the community engagement, the strategic plan for all students. It started with two community workshops. Now, going back to 2012, and Stacy, you were here, Laura was part of that, geared at improvement in educational opportunities for all students. When the community came together, it wasn't a bashing of the school district, it was taking what was good and seeing if we could make it better. And any of us that were there, that was, that was it. It wasn't a gripe session. But beyond that, then, we as a board directed our superintendent to put together a vision steering committee, to take all of the ideas that were shared, and put together a strategic plan, a vision, a mission, and he did. Now, appoint a vision steering committee. Let's look at the composition of that. The easy way would have been, well, I'll get some, a couple of our administrators and just put this thing together. No, he did what was right for the students. Let me tell you, the composition of the original vision steering committee. Ben Contine, chairman, secondary education teacher. Rena Huntington, elementary education. Schwenklot, manufacturing. Karen Sims, administration and middle school teacher. Latisha Servin, PTA. Steve Reynolds was a school board member. Kevin Edwards from Western Nevada College. Adam Watley, that we heard from tonight, secondary education. Jody Ostrander, a Carson High student. Wranglish, manufacturing, a mechanical engineer. Joe McCarthy, the arts community. And then Richard himself is on the committee. So he put together, it wasn't administrators, it was led by the teachers and the business community and others in our community. That was, that was doing the right thing. From there, we saw, you know, what happened because of this. Educational partnerships, they're put together for, for the kids. We started with 20, we now have over 200, which includes business our city government we're now in partnership with, and the library, and higher ed, not only WNC, but UNR. Some of the things that just, our manufacturers came forward. Let us teach you kids about global awareness. What are the challenges and opportunities in doing business globally? Expanded technology literacy, which leads to artificial intelligence. All that was put in place, and provide real-world application or applied learning. The curriculum that matters, I mean, think of where we came. One-to-one mobile devices, we now have an engineering program because of this. An entrepreneurial program, which replaced our business program because of the Adams Hub. The Gate program was bringing forward. Applied learning and project lead the way for our CTE program. Our introduction to teaching with Carson High and UNR, and providing multiple pathways to being college and career-ready. And these are just a few of the things that happened. Because the superintendent put together a steering committee comprised of teachers and our business community and others, this led to this for opportunities that are not talked about, now they're real for our students. talked about now, they're real for our students. Did he let it go with that? No, he, from that nearly eight years ago, there's quarterly meetings to find out where are we and what can we do better for the kids. That's doing the right thing, not the easy thing. The easy thing would have been, okay, we've got a strategic plan, let's put it on the shelf. He didn't do that. He made the effort to do what was right for the students. Now, going on to the Learner Center approach to learning, personalized learning for all students. We were at the NASB meeting, what was the first speaker? Miranda, talked about all students. We had superintendents from across the state get up and gave what they believe, you know, would help the students. We are the only school district that's providing through the Learner Center approach, individualized learning for all of our students. We're far surpassed. We're going to lead Nevada out of the abyss. Is it easy? No, the easy thing would be, okay, let's have the teachers go back in the classroom and, you know, everybody will be happy or, you know, whatever. It's not that way. We're, you know, when they talk about adult issues, we can figure that out, you know, together. But the superintendent put this in place. You know, the Clark County superintendents, you know, talked about the mosaic of the demographics of Clark County, but not how do you get to the students? But through the Learner Center model, through curriculum assessments, the learning guides, the tracking system, we're talking about that and the Mastery Connect overall, the real-time interventions with the learning guides. Just now, not waiting for, after a kid fails, and the support teams. But all of that was put in at the direction of the superintendent to let our staff put this thing in place for the kids. Many superintendents would have taken the easy way out and found another way. Richard didn't. And let me just talk a little bit about our facilities. You know, we as a board, through the bond issue, had something planned for improvement in schools, but the Sandy Hook thing came along. We decided as a board to have single point of interest in all of our schools. Their superintendent made it happen. You know, directed staff, we've got to do this, we're changing our priorities. We got the sheriff's resource officers that came about with negotiation of Sheriff Furlong and our superintendent of what the benefits to our school. Many of our schools had portables. Again, through the bond issue and Richard's directive, we now have mostly brick and mortar and portables are gone. Our energy savings through the solar array, that was taken, Richard through our staff and Mark Kornick, let them go with the ideas. What can we save? All of those energy savings went back into educational opportunities for our kids. As far as wellness, you know, we talked about fiscal, nutritional, you know, we've got, but we got the health clinic. And again, strategic plan, vision committee, Richard made it happen. The social-emotional learning, and I know Mike, you were a little bit concerned about this, that was one of the first priorities in the strategic plan was social-emotional health for our students. It didn't happen overnight. It took a lot of effort. That, you know, the mental health, we got the social workers in place, but more than the social workers, we've got them now on as employees instead of contract workers. They're invaluable to our teachers and to our students and to our families. And let me, and this is all, you know, Richard as a superintendent making this happen. Just some of the highlights, we've heard about it, but I just made a few of these. We got the bandera. We've got Steam Night at Eagle Valley Middle School. We've got the Makers Club at Carson Middle School. Laura brought up the AP, the pass rate, which is above the state, national, international levels. The CTE pass rate that was mentioned tonight by our superintendent, we're first in the state. The expanded, the club participation and, you know, through national achievement, we've got FFA, HOSA, Skills USA, speech and debate, FBLA. All of these things have expanded because of strategic plan, Learner Center, we're getting kids motivated. This didn't happen because of us, but our superintendent put this in place with, and letting our staff do their jobs. The teacher ed program, the Jump Start program with WNC, when kids are ready, let them go. All right, somebody had to put this in place. Our graduation rate, we talked about it, 93.2, probably higher at Carson High this year. I'm just citing this as examples of what a board, working with the superintendent and specifically what Richard has done that has led to greater opportunities for our kids. Are there issues along the way? Yes, but let me, let me just read you some things here. Richard's words. This is a document that we got in August of 16. Let me quote from Richard. "In our efforts as a school district, you prepare all students for life and life after their formative years. We recognize the need to implement a system that can honestly meet the learning needs of every student." That's the Learner Center model. He goes on to say, "Our work is not done. There are many traditional and time-honored elements and practices that are being challenged." That's okay. You know, people are coming up, still prefer to be in the classroom, close the door and that's it. But he did what was right for the kids, not what was easy. "Again, with student academic growth at the center of our decisions," this is Richard, "I have been amazed and delighted at the knowledge, creativity, and professional contributions of our professional staff. I personally have talked to a lot of our professional staff who said, 'Give us more because we're in the right direction.'" And again, they're all behind Richard. So I would say, if there are issues, Richard is the easiest guy in the world to work with. He doesn't go out and say, "Hey, I'm the greatest." He recognizes the staff and listens to the staff for the benefit of our students. Anyway, I would like that. Renee put in the record as part of his evaluation going forward. With that, Richard, I personally, as president of the school board, thank you for what you've done, the direction you've taken us, that you've made it happen. You didn't take the easy way, you did what was right for the students. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You are very lavish, undeservedly so. I want to also say that I'm surrounded by just educational geniuses when it comes to knowing their trade and I want to thank my staff. Mrs. Kima, Mr. Feuling, Dr. Delphin, Renee, Mr. Pavlakis. We're really blessed to have just people whose hearts are in the right place. And that extends to our administrators, to our bus drivers, to our teachers. Can't think of a better place to work. And my thanks to you folks as well for helping us along the way. We do have things that we know we need to do better on and I appreciate feedback and direction and I know it's easier for all of us when we have a unified direction. So again, I thank you for your contributions and for your sacrifices and really grateful to work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Now, this is, this is an action item, so.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees deem the overall rating of Mr. Richard Stokes, superintendent of the Carson City School District, to be very satisfactory for the 2018 calendar year.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Before we go any further, is there any comment from anyone in the audience? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Richard.
On to agenda item 15, approval and consent agenda.
It's after nine and it's almost in.
Okay, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Seen none? All in favor? I'd only say that we have the community PLC tomorrow night, but any other comments on the informational items? In this case, seen none. Agenda item number 17, request for future agenda topics?
I think one of the things that, looking through everybody's comments for the evaluation is it's, there seems to be a part where we don't think that we're part of the planning and I don't know if we have that in, have that open discussion of how we want to be included in the planning or what you guys are thinking, but it seemed like an overall theme and that we didn't feel like the board and the superintendent were planning the same way. And I don't know, maybe that was just a feeling I was getting looking through that, but I don't know if anybody has any feedback on that.
Any other, any other, any other future agenda items?
I'd like, could I request a training at the next board meeting for how the microphones Just in light of, we have some new board members that are going to be starting, a couple that are going to be leaving, they might all need training.
It might take a few hours, Mr. Wood.
As long as there's another test like today.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Okay, seen none. Without objection, we are adjourned.